All right, I'm gonna call to order the June 12th City Commission meeting. We'll begin with the invocation given by me, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you're ready. Happy Pride Month for our Loc. June is widely recognized as Pride Month, begun in remembrance of the Stonewall protests in June of 1969, and now a time of reflection and celebration where we honor the courage and resilience of those who have fought and continue to fight for the right to love and be loved, to express themselves authentically, and to live without fear of discrimination or prejudice. It's a time to acknowledge the struggles faced by the LGBTQ+ community, and to reaffirm our commitment to creating a society that values and respects the dignity of every person. This acknowledgement is extended from vibrant pride parades and festivals to basic government recognition, and now to recognition by sports teams and other corporate entities. But it's been sad in recent days to see some pushback on what is often just casual corporate recognition of pride, which should be the bare minimum. But despite the ugly rhetoric, I remain hopeful, in part by reflecting on how much has changed just in my lifetime. In June of 2002, when I got married, my gay friends were denied that right. Two years later, almost 59% of Michigan voters approved a constitutional amendment banning gay marriage and civil unions. It wasn't until another day in June, a hot one, June 26, 2015, that the U.S. Supreme Court put an end to our long discriminatory practice and allowed gay marriage throughout the country. And now, less than a decade after that ruling, gay marriage is overwhelmingly supported by Michiganders. We have progressed as a society, but even the progress we've seen from my generation and other adults is no match for our children. Watching my three children and their friends navigate childhood in the teenage years, I've witnessed a new generation living the values of nondiscrimination and inclusion. These young people are bravely living as their authentic selves, and the level of acceptance, support, and celebration from their peers for their LGBTQ+ classmates and friends is inspiring. That's not to say that our youth in Royal Oak do not face discrimination or their challenges, but the way this new generation brings open hearts to each other as they seek a deeper societal understanding of sexual orientation and gender identity gives me hope for all the challenges they will face together in the world. So it is with somewhat obvious pride and substantial progress made, and hope for much more from our future generations, that I am going to be celebrating Pride this month. May we, as a city, continue to champion the rights of the LGBTQ+ community, celebrate diversity, and foster an environment where all individuals are free to be their authentic selves without fear of judgment, so we can always say we are Royal Oak proud?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, with that, I'll move on to approval of the agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Cole, second by Commissioner Dubach.
Any discussion on this? Okay, with them, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. We have an agenda. Okay, now we have a proclamation honoring some Royal Oak high school students who, sitting in the front, got me a little bit choked up just now, but I'm gonna make it through on the actual proclamation. So if they would like to join me over here at the microphone, and we will get this ready. See. All the things I see. Okay, proclamation honoring Royal Oak high school student filmmakers Dakota Hendren, Hannah Johnson, and teacher Mr. Mike Conrad, 2023 C-SPAN Student CAM or award-winning documentary banned books, The Effect of Censorship. Whereas, reading books offers the entire world to each one of us willing to open the cover and begin the adventure. And whereas each book, much like each reader, has its own unique identity, and whereas the ability to read as many books written from diverse perspectives and experiences serves to enhance the reader's own adventure, or as Dr. Sees put it, "The more that you can read, the more things you will know, the more you learn, the more places you'll go." And whereas, the act of banning a book denies the reader the right to feel, to experience, to know and to learn their very sense of themselves, and whereas educators, teachers, unlock the world to students when they teach a student to read and to use the knowledge gained from the books they have read to think independently and critically. And whereas, the Royal Oak community is enriched by the effect Royal Oak high school teacher Mr. Mike Conrad has on his students. He continues to be an asset as he supports and nurtures in his students the art of learning by providing creative opportunities for students to apply and expand their skills and knowledge. And whereas, participating in the C-SPAN Student CAM competition has brought this exact opportunity to his students. And whereas Dakota Hendren and Hannah Johnson, working under the guidance of Mr. Conrad, collaboratively constructed a narrative expressing a vast spectrum of views on a relevant and impactful subject matter, the banning of books. And whereas Dakota and Hannah took their vision and manufactured a video presentation that presents the whole picture of what banning books does to individuals and the community. And whereas Dakota and Hannah's work is not only educational and impactful, it is award-winning. Capturing a third-place award in the 2023 C-SPAN Student CAM competition, where they were up against more than 3,000 students from 40 states, Washington D.C., Kenya, and the United Arab Emirates. And whereas Royal Oak is honored to be the place where Mr. Mike Conrad chooses to educate children, fostering in them a lifelong desire to continue to learn. And whereas Royal Oak is honored to be home to these amazing students Dakota Hendren and Hannah Johnson, who have benefited from the talents of their teacher, Mr. Mike Conrad, and now are themselves teachers to us all, educating our community on the pursuit of preserving our rights of free speech and expression through the ability to read any book we may so choose. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Pro Tem Melanie Macy, and the members of the Royal Oak City Commission hereby proclaim the entire Royal Oak community and ask them to join us in honoring and recognizing the importance of the works of Mr. Mike Conrad, Ms. Dakota Hendren, and Ms. Hannah Johnson. Thank you.
Thank you.
First, I just wanted to thank Mr. Conrad, of course.
Everything she said is so true. Like, he just gave me the opportunity to really share my voice, and he gave the opportunity to both of us and our entire class. I also wanted to thank Sidetrack Bookshop, Royal Oak Public Library over there, we're represented over there, and Goldfish Tea for allowing us to use their space for this project. Thank you.
I agree with everything she said.
You're welcome.
I'm grateful to live in a community that supports the arts. I'm grateful to work at an educational community that supports students having agency and a voice, but I'm mostly importantly grateful for these two students who saw, see fit to take a risk and use their voice. Thank you.
Does anyone want to say anything to the students? Congratulations. Go forth and make more art. All right, now with that, the time has come for public comment. So I have a little spiel that I'm going to read. "The City Commission values and relies on the input of our fellow citizens to make decisions. Now is the time set aside for the public to address us on any city-related issues, both on the agenda and not. We ask that comments be directed to us as a whole and not individual commissioners. In addition to public comment, there will be one public hearing at tonight's meeting. The request of Legacy League LLC for approval of a new plan of operation. If you're here to comment on this, you may wait until the public hearing is open and comment at that time. If you wish to speak tonight at either public comment or the public hearing, please wait until you're recognized by me, then come to the podium. For the record, you will state your name and address. Please be mindful that we wish to hear from everyone who wishes to speak, so comments are limited to three minutes or less per speaker, not per topic, with the exception of the public hearing where you may rise to speak to those once it's opened. There is a timer at the podium to help you keep track of your time. If you don't wish to speak tonight, please don't hesitate at any time to email or call us with your comments. Please note we will not respond directly to questions during public comment, however, we are taking notes and will address the questions when the agenda topic is discussed or refer to the proper city department if it is a matter that's not scheduled on our agenda tonight. Our city manager is diligently taking notes and will look into matters needed as well." So, spiel over. Who would like to go first? Mr. Mahat?
Good evening. I'm Ed Mahat. My address is 510 West Houstonia in Royal Oak, 48073. It's an honor to be here tonight, especially because I didn't know that my former colleague, Mr. Conrad, would be so honored. It was really great to see him. I've worked for 12 years with Mr. Conrad at the Royal Oak High School, and those students are lucky to have him, so I want to thank him again. Really. I'll take the rest of my time to tell you about my favorite hobby, which is Shakespeare Royal Oak, a professional outdoor theater event that many of you have come to know and love. We're celebrating our 23rd year, believe it or not, and will be opening on July 27th. But tonight, I'm here to talk about our fundraising event, which is going to take place on June 29th, right over at the farmer's market. It's called The Labor of Love. I'll leave these flyers in the lobby for anybody who wants them, and I'll make sure they get into your mailboxes. The Labor of Love is a fun event. It's a preseason cast party. So all the artists, the actors, the designers, and the directors that are featured in our festival will be there that night, and so we want people to feel free to come, donate, enjoy having a party, and we'll just have a nice time celebrating our 23rd season. This year, we'll be doing Love's Labor's Lost, which is a comedy that we've never done before. We're very excited because the director this year is the artistic director of Break the Chain Theater. His name is Craig Esther, and he's acted with us on a couple of occasions, but we're really excited to see his new vision for this play. So I wanted to encourage the public and you to think about coming to see us on Thursday, June 29th, at the farmer's market. It should be a lot of fun, and it's on our website, shakespeareroyal oak dot com. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Can I give this little, can I read it as opposed to...
Of course.
Okay, thank you. Tom Lenhart, 1502 Maxwell, Royal Oak, Michigan, 48067. "Good evening, City Commissioners, Traffic Committee Members, and Citizens of Royal Oak. I would like to comment on a topic on the agenda to be discussed later this evening. I want to thank the Traffic Committee Members for not once, but twice, seeking the counsel of the citizens in the neighborhood. In February, and again in May, Maxwell Street residents came to this very room at a meeting called by the Traffic Committee and recommended logically and fiscally for at least two remedies to reduce the speed on our street. Number one, we asked for random police presence in the morning and late afternoon when traffic on our street increases. We, the residents, have noticed this occurring with tickets being given to those exceeding the speed limit. The tickets send a message to the violating vehicle driver and to all of the other drivers on our street at the same time. Slow down. We asked for a speed radar sign to be posted occasionally on our street, and the Police Department responded to our request with favorable results. The speed on our street now reflects the speed limit. I would like to thank the Police Department for their assistance in reducing the speed on our street. The residents would like to thank the Traffic Committee for implementing these suggestions and the Royal Police Department for their follow-through. Vehicle speed on our street was an issue that has been resolved as a result of involving citizens in the neighborhood and the actions of our Police Department at no cost to the community. The residents asked that the city continue to implement the strategies that have worked: random police presence in the morning and late afternoon, and use of the speed radar sign to remind drivers of their vehicle's speed. I think this is a definite win for both the city and the neighborhood, and I'm glad to have had the opportunity to participate in a government of the people, by the people, for the people. Thank you."
Good evening, members of the Commission and members of the community. My name's Lucas Lasecki, and I hail from Farmington Hills. To begin, on a personal note, as a proud member of the LGBTQ+ community, I'd like to thank the Mayor Pro Tem for her wonderful declaration in recognition of Pride Month. I would have to say probably the best such recognition I have ever heard from a government agency. And as a student activist, I'd also like to thank the filmmakers who were in attendance and congratulate them on their win in the C-SPAN contest. Now down to business. I'm here representing an independent transit accessibility study called Is the Metro Accessible? And on behalf of the group, I'd like to express our emphatic support for the proposal by the city to improve the accessibility infrastructure surrounding Royal Oak's Smart Bus stops. So many stops around the area, around the region, are just sticks put in the dirt which don't provide a sufficient accessible surface for many disabled riders, particularly those using wheelchairs and other mobility devices to access the buses. It's crucial that many, that all stops have concrete landing pads which provide a safe and even surface for ramps to be deployed and for riders to access the buses in boarding and alighting. A lot of my colleagues weren't able to join us because of those lapses in accessibility, which reflect across the board, across the region, a lack of consideration for the needs of the disabled community in infrastructure, though we appreciate the plans to expand by the city, which represent what we hope is a continued commitment to the needs of the disabled community and continued investment in infrastructure and public transportation. If you'd like more information about our project, our data is open to the public. It's available at isthemetroaccessible dot com. But on that note, I'd like to thank the Commission for their time and encourage them to vote yes on the adjustments proposed in the agenda. Thank you.
Who's next? It's in the back?
Good evening. My name is Frank Hobert, and I'm here to represent my building that I own at 408 South Washington. It's the green building. Used to be a Kresge's building. For nine months, I've been trying to secure a right-of-way permit to put a scissor lift. I don't know if you know what it is, but it's a little mechanical ladder. Goes up and down, goes sideways. I've had nothing but difficulty from the City of Royal Oak employees. Last week, I got two citations from your employees, Mr. Brake, for not being able to do the work. You know what I got today? Today, you found me guilty of the citation for not doing the work. So much for justice. Citation came last week. Default judgment came today. I've had it up to here with incompetence coupled with arrogance. And I've spoken with our city engineer, and I thought we were making some progress because I had nothing but difficulty with the engineering department. I want to relate to you that for the building that I own, Hegelstein's Bakery, last year, your civil engineer, your employee, with his paid salary, and paid vacations, and paid holidays, and paid medical, and paid pensions, everything, denied my building permit because I wouldn't pay $2,000 for a bond to have a furnace delivered. This is your employee. It's obnoxious. It is so hard to be successful in downtown Royal Oak. I had an eviction on Wednesday afternoon of a tenant that had been in business for 25 years. And I'll talk to you about your parking policy some other day, but he's gone. Customers are gone. We're losing. I'm asking for some reasonableness, some justice, just some plain common sense. It shouldn't be that hard to get a scissor lift approved. I spoke to you two months about, two months ago about this at the DDA meeting. Nothing has occurred. Your employee wants to know, "How big is a scissor lift? Will it fit within the five-foot work area?" It will. But the fact is that you sent me a citation. Court dates on, I have to respond to the court by June 24th, and today I get default judgment from last week. I appreciate your service.
Thank you, Mr. Hobert. Yes, in the back.
Sorry to hear about the difficulties of the previous speaker, and I hope they will be resolved ASAP. I'm, my name is Trish Oliver. I am very concerned about the proposed amendments to the recreational marijuana licensing ordinance that is Agenda Item 14 tonight. They would allow the Commission to approve marijuana retail stores and grow facilities near students who attend any school within Royal Oak at its discretion. I am referring specifically to Proposed Amendment Section 4, 5(c). Every parent should be concerned about marijuana distribution occurring on properties right next to their child's school. Currently, Gatsby Cannabis at 5130 Meyer Avenue is literally across the street from Oakland School's Technical Campus, which educates 9th to 12th graders in vocational trades. In other words, it is a high school. As a parent, I am very concerned that the mayor and city commission grossly violated the city's and state's 1,000-foot rule by 912 feet, as Gatsby Cannabis is just 88 feet away from this high school. The proposed amendment would legitimize the controversial approval of Gatsby's license along with allowing every student at any school to be exposed to a marijuana outlet at the committee's discretion. The complete rewrite of the new master plan and the zoning ordinance are designed to remove protections for schools, families, and students, and will complement the amendments to the marijuana licensing ordinance. In a February 1st, 2022 Royal Oak Tribune article, "When Objecting to Marijuana Outlets Being Placed Close to Schools," Oakland School Superintendent Wanda Cook Robinson raised the specter of the harm that marijuana causes teens with regular use. She said the negative impact upon teens is undisputed. My concern is for every Royal Oak student at every school who would now be placed at risk. In addition, relaxing the requirement for distance between marijuana stores could open the door for dozens of additional marijuana outlets within Royal Oak. The Commission should hold a public hearing before any significant ordinance amendment such as this is voted on because it affects every Royal Oak parent. Please recall that when you passed the original ordinance, hundreds of residents objected to various provisions in the ordinance at a public hearing. Many of the comments stress protection for students at our Royal Oak schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver. Mr. Harrison?
Thank you. Bill Harrison, 2729 Trafford, 82-year member of the Royal Oak community. And as you know, I had been following this marijuana thing for a long time. I had FOED the information about the selection of the facilities, and it came back severely redacted. So my comments tonight about your proposed ordinance changes are: The percent complete of each of the three approved marijuana facilities should be discussed as part of the consideration for the proposed ordinance changes. The proposed amendments to the marijuana ordinance will allow a second six-month extension, provided the building permit is not expired and they actively engage in construction. Or the improvements are complete, but the state license has not been received. The request for a second extension will be valid for one year from the effective date of the state license. If the construction is complete and they have a state license, why do they need a one-year, an extension for an entire year? I don't understand it. Maybe I'm misunderstanding what you're asking. Anyway, the distance between a marijuana establishment from any school, existing retailer, or micro-business previously limited to 1,000 feet will now be at the discretion of you folks. This looks like a CYOA for allowing the Gatsby facility to be located with 88, within 88 feet of the Oakland School's Technical Campus by claiming that it is not a school. Ridiculous. The school representatives originally objected to the facility, but their objectives were quietly silenced. I've often wondered, who put the pressure on them? Note that a grower A, the fourth selected facility not yet approved by the Commission, is also located adjacent to the Technical Campus. Allowing a marijuana facility closer than 1,000 feet from any school is grossly irresponsible and shows little or no regard for student welfare. Allowing marijuana facilities to be located less than 1,000 feet from each other is just inviting an adverse impact on adjacent neighborhoods. Makes me wonder what is next? The approval of more facilities? Paul Brake, in an interview with Fox 2 Detroit, said, "Are we going to open up the floodgates? I kind of doubt it. I think we're going to do this incrementally." I guess my time's up. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Mr. Ashley?
Alan Ashley, Royal Oak Manor. I'm sure everybody read the article on your terrific parking situation. It was not a good article. You people have been derelict in your duty. This was, should have never been done. If you had done your due diligence, the city manager had done his due diligence and found out that the problems of other cities with the same thing. Now they have gotten rid of it. You are now hooked until, what, 2027 with here? We will not have a downtown in Washington unless you do the final thing that the DDA recommended: Remove those parking meters and put the old style back in. Or tell those people, MPS, those are computers. They can change them. I worked 40 years in computers. I started on key punch cards. That's how far back I am. I wrote programs with less memory than the phones you have in your pocket. And we got worked around it. We wrote thousands of lines of code in small areas. It can be dumb. They, if they don't have the talent, then I tell them, "That's a breach of contract. Get the heck out and go back to your own meters." The DDA even said they would pay to put the old meters back in. Yet you people have done nothing. Yes, you increased it to three hours, 20 minutes for that. You increased the parking around the handicap and around the post office, but you haven't done the major thing to save the downtown area. Yes, it is dying. More businesses are leaving. You may have some leaving this year. I know some that will be leaving next year. I walked these streets. How many have you walked the streets during the day in downtown Royal Oak? Probably none of you. Maybe on Saturday or on Sunday, but I walked the streets of downtown Royal Oak and around the area every day unless it's raining. But I do that. I doubt any of you have done that. When's the last time you took off and walked at 3 o'clock in the afternoon in downtown Royal Oak, or 11 o'clock in the morning and walked Royal Oak? You haven't. I know that. You people are working. Maybe it's time that you take some time out to care about the city that you represent and start doing what you're supposed to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ashley. Ms. Wagner. Mrs. Wagner. Mrs. Wagner.
Janice Wagner. So I'm here to talk about the Senior Advisory Board. Yes, we need one. We need one separate. I, six years ago, I started asking for this and to you, this commission, and the Parks and Rec Committee, that there should be a separate commission. We've got a senior tsunami coming in. We've got a plan now. We need a board, just like the Environmental Advisory Board. We need a board to run that plan and, and get some things implemented on behalf of seniors. Sarah Kindiger, who's the Chair of the Senior Task Force and Parks and Rec, gave you a great foundation for it, for what could be written in the ordinance. I would recommend having as many people on that board as are on the Environmental Activities Board because you want to break up into groups and work on it, but that's, you know, up to you guys. But I want to see it tonight. I want you to pass, not wait for another committee, another commission, another information gathering. I would like you to see you tonight, direct the city to write that ordinance and bring it back to the next meeting so we can start working on this. We haven't done, we haven't, we passed the plan. The, the task force was sundown and really, there's been some work done on it, but we need a board to run it and advise the city. So that's number one. Number two is the bus paths. Unlike the gentleman who was here, who already spoke, I am not in favor of those. They are on the list of activities for, for the plan. But we have, according to SMART, there's very little user, usership of, of these sites. There's only two that actually have, what, what I would think would be, would merit having them. And there's nobody assigned to clean them off in the winter. So how safe are they going to be? If there's snow and ice and that kind of thing? These are ARPA funds. I would like to see the ARPA funds used for benches and accessibility in the parks. That benefits not only seniors, and it's part of their plan, but it, it benefits the entire community. So that's what I would like to see. Also, regarding ARPA, at the last meeting, how much time do I have? At the last meeting, special meeting, we paid Guide House $317,000 to advise us on ARPA funds. And suddenly, we needed a special meeting over something that was happening in Washington DC that I knew about in April as a possibility. So where was the ball dropped? Was it, was it Guide House or, or where was it? There should, you should not had to have had a special meeting to make that vote on, on Monday, last Monday. And I'd also like to see an update on the ARPA funds. You had a, a meeting that said, "Where do you want to use it?" And there was a lot of feedback on it. If I look at the CIP, there's no money that's actually allocated in there. I'd like to see the city, as part of transparency, say, "Where are we now with the money? What have we spent? What's left? And what is projected to be spent?" So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner.
Hello. My name is Matthew Tenegas. I live at 712 Walnut Avenue here in Royal Oak. First off, I'd like to, if, do the fact that we were talking about the arts and the young ladies who were, who were finalists in their art competition. I'd like to recognize my daughter, Robin Tenegas, for being a finalist in the College Ben Sultan Living Oceans Foundation International Art Competition. She placed as a finalist, the top 13 out of about 1,200 kids from around the world, from the ages of 11 to 14. She was on the Royal Oak Schools page. I know, it's embarrassing. She's here working, she's here working on an merit badge right now because she's working towards her Eagle Scout as well. Other thing I would like to, to bring to attention is, the, one of the biggest issues we have around Northwood School, where most of my kids go, is the congestion on McDonald's and the fact of how we get the people through this commuter school every morning. One of the biggest issues that I've seen, I walk there every day. I've been walking there every day for, I'll have lost count, probably 10 years at least. The crosswalk that's in the parking lot really is a hindrance to keeping that flow moving through the parking lot. Everybody has to come through to pick their kids up if they drive. They come through, pull up next to the school, and then there's the crosswalk where all the kids and everybody walk to get to their cars or walk back into the neighborhoods where they live. If that crosswalk were moved to the other side of the parking lot to allow them to cross there, then there wouldn't be quite, the stop-go, stop-go of everybody trying to get across this one funnel point where everybody else comes in, would help ease the congestion and some of these problems that I know the residents on McDonald's absolutely hate. That's why I don't drive my kids to school. That's why I've walked for 10 years, because I don't like it. I have friends that have been, had their cars hit multiple times, everything like that. So would be something to look into. I've spoken with the PTA, with the principal, and they were going to go to the Board of Education, but I don't know how far that's ever gone. Bringing up to the City Commission here might be something that they could look into to help ease that congestion and kill a couple birds with one stone. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tenegas. And congratulations to Robin, who was on my bus in DC, so I got to see her playful autors and vote for them. Yeah. Lizzie's mom. Literally sat two rows in front of you, but it's all right. I remember you and your arm.
Mayor Protop.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, sir. If you just, what was the cross street again? On McDonald's there? Um, it's, oh, which one is it? Give me two minutes, I'll look it up for you. It's the one, like, directly in front of the school. It's the one directly across the street from the school there. So there's the four-way stop. Got it. Right there, on McDonald's, right in front of, I believe it's the gymnasium. And then, I, I can find the name of the road for you in just a moment. No, I see it. Thank you. Okay.
Robin.
Hello. So often when I walk home from school, I walk from Ram's Middle School. The cross, during like rush hour and there are cars driving by, you know the cross, the crossing between like Crooks and Washin, and Washington Street, right? You know that area? So on, on the, on the Crooks side where it's going north, there is another crosswalk where it is. But often, cars are turning there when it is, when it's the, when it's the pedestrians right away. And I've seen people almost get hit because cars weren't looking or that they just can't see around the corner. And same thing with other crossings. It's just that it gets congested with people trying to cross, trying to turn and kids trying to cross the streets. I've personally almost been hit by a car a few times. Same thing with a few friends because not, cars not paying attention or just not being able to see around the corner or just, yeah. Something that might, like a certain time where it's like, where it's like specifically for a pedestrian to cross or just like a way to see or where you're less likely to be hit by a car when you're walking.
No car getting crossed.
Yeah. In that area, in that crossing area. But that's all I have to say, really.
Thank you, Robin. Bad, well-learned. Who's next? This man.
Robin, I hope it's a beginning for you. Good evening, everybody. Pathie Regio, 1403 Smith Avenue, Royal Oak. First of all, I hope my, I brought a book, this book up, Tell Your Children the Truth About Marijuana Mental Health and Violence by Alex Berens. And when we were discussing it before it was voted on and they were put into the neighborhoods. I gave you a book. It was supposed to be sent to the library, and it wasn't. So I hope this book was not banned. Okay. I did do everything, everybody talked about the marijuana. And before I get into the marijuana thing again, I wanted to say, I know it's, I know it's Pride Month. I respect that. But you should talk to the Board of Education because, do you remember D-Day, June 6? Do you ever see a film of all the people running in the water, all the young people, younger than you, fighting for our country? They had the pride flag up, which is fine. But on D-Day? Why didn't they have the American flag on that? And teach the students, "This is D-Day. This is why you have your freedom. That's why you're up there, I've told you many times." That was disrespectful to our country. One day, June 6, to have that. Okay. As far as the marijuana thing, there was a mother in Texas. Her name, last name was Stack. She had a son named Tucker. Called her parents and said, he was evidently away to college. He called his parents, says, "I'm going to stop." She became schizophrenic, some people do on marijuana. He said, "I love you guys so much. I'm going to stop using this marijuana. I love you so much, I'm going to stop." Hung up, committed suicide, and died. She is going for, she wants in the schools, starting at junior high, the kids to be educated about drugs. We should have that here in our city. We should have not just the, not just the therapy, the mental health. We got to get it before. We have to teach junior high kids the dangers, the pros and cons, that, what, what it does to children, what it does to their families. The, the young man, I know there are other issues, that did the shooting at Michigan State University, they did an autopsy. Toxicity report was high on alcohol and high on THC. We're having a pot tent in our city that was voted down and brought back up again. It should not be happening here. We should not do it to the citizens of Royal Oak or any other city in the, in America. It's not necessary. And I'm glad for all those people that spoke up about it. But I do think they should have honored D-Day. Just one day. Fly the flag and tell the students in every class, "This is why we are free."
Thank you.
Is it okay if I hand these out?
Uh, could you give them to our clerk down there and she'll give them out to us?
Say that again?
Could you give them to our clerk at the end and she'll make sure they get down to us?
I'm going to hand them on to Engineer Gagne, if that's okay?
It's okay with me, if it's okay with her?
Hey, Commissioners. My name is Chris Ott. I live at 1305 Ann Drive. I'm here to speak about the Agenda Item Number 9, which is Citizens Traffic Committee Items, specifically 6i. And those are the crosswalks on Irving Avenue. I'd like to thank the Citizens Traffic Committee and the Engineering Department for the recommendation and endorsement of these two crosswalks last month. I think it will greatly enhance the walkability and safety along the Lawson Park Western Side. So I've provided you all with this printout that you can refer to later tonight when the Agenda Item comes up. And the ask here is pretty simple. All I'm asking is the commission to consider the location of the northernmost proposed crosswalk and to locate it as close to the private condominium drive as possible. Now, the reason for this is this location will minimize the parking impact, which is super important to Lawson Park. Mr. Fideli knows that very well. It's one of our most popular parks. And then additionally, we will not have to remove the, the tree that was planted in the right of way that is currently right next to the Lawson Park sidewalk. Additionally, the Lawson Park East sidewalk will need to be remediated and likely will require heavy demolition, which is something that obviously we don't want to see on a brand-new sidewalk that was poured last year. And then the last concern is just, if the crosswalk is kept in its current recommended location that was resolved last Citizens Traffic Committee, I believe that'll create a pretty contentious situation from the crosswalk to the private drive with people trying to park there and ultimately, you know, impairing the ability of people to cross safely right there and obviously creating some attention to the Royal Oak Police Department, which we do, we do not want to waste their resources. The second, second ask I have related to this Agenda topic item is that the commission consider enhancing the signage for these two crosswalks with what I call signpost reflectors. These are used in our neighboring cities like Ferndale, Berkeley, and Madison Heights. And they are affixed to signposts. They go from the ground to the sign itself. They mirror the reflectivity and the color of the signs, so they're able to grab people's attention. So they look up at the sign a lot more quickly than if it were just a normal green or gray signpost. So I think that'll be a great enhancement if, if that's able to be done on these sign installations. I'm going to keep my time relatively short. And hopefully, when you, when this Agenda Item comes up later tonight, you'll consider these alterations to the request. Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Ott.
Yes.
No, no, I said, "Thank you."
Thank you.
Mr. Thompson.
Mike Thompson, part of representing Lawson Park Homeowners Association. Chris, Chris Ott represents the Crossings. And our association is fully in support of this. The Crossings is 82 units, about 250 people live there. So it's just west of Lawson Park. So again, as Chris says, it's, it's Item Agenda Number 9. We work with the Traffic Committee and a city engineer. And we're, we're asking for two, two crosswalks. It's, it's traffic coming. The reason is it's, it's the southern stretch of Irving. It's part of the, the old truck route connecting 696 to downtown, back and forth. It's the only city where we've got a direct discharge and entry into an expressway into residential streets. So it's, it's a part of the 1980s construction and the system of diverters to protect the neighborhoods. There's been no change in the geometrics of that roadway. So it's, traffic speeds, is speeding up. We've got additional traffic now. We've got, we've got more housing units. The Delaware is coming online. Harrison 2, even the dispensary is akin to fast food traffic with, with small purchases that will connect, you know, from the freeway to downtown through the Royal Treatment there on Harrison. So we're looking in advance or right now to calm down traffic. The park usage is phenomenal. Pat Perush, Joseph Murphy with block grant monies, 1.2. Well-spent, it's, it's really, it should win some design awards. Commissioner Macy, the board that you were on, John Fideli with Parks. It's, it's, it's just an amazing park. If, if anyone hasn't been there, check out Lawson Park. So again, we're supporting this, these two crosswalks in our community, its walkability, its traffic safety, and it's, it's going to really help out. So, thanks.
Mr. Thompson? You back?
Hi there. First off, I want to thank everybody for being here tonight. And also to the wonderful staff that have been here to help me with my children. I'm sure you guys have seen them running rampant. So first off, thank you guys for being here. My name is Madeline Ibanez. I'm a resident of Royal Oak. I live at 11 Mile and Campbell. And my family has actually lived in this area and owned the home since 1999. So we've been here almost for 25 years. I've been living here on and off throughout my whole life. Unfortunately, just a little bit of background story. I'm not trying to give a stop story, but just to give context of my situation. I'm a single parent. I lived in Livonia for a couple of years. Unfortunately, I was, I had to become divorced, leaving a very, very toxic marriage. Unfortunately, my grandmother passed away around the same time. I'm currently living in her home and just looking to, I'm so sorry. Just looking to have the support of the City of Royal Oak when it comes to putting in special education signs or, I'm sorry, autistic child in the area signs around my home. My, I am, again, I am a single parent, so I am the only person who's able to advocate and protect my child and support them and to give them everything they need. I came before you to talk about my son very briefly and to talk about the different reasons why I believe that we need a sign to keep him safe in the City of Westland. When I requested it, within two weeks, there was no problem. I didn't have to come to any meetings, they immediately put it up. So in case people in the room who don't know, autism is a complex developmental disorder that affects a child's cognitive and social communication abilities, which includes my son Sebastian. Children with autism often face challenges in everyday situations, including navigating streets and crossing roads. In further safety, it is essential to have an autistic child in the area sign. One of the reasons I was given is that the City of Royal Oak has never done one, but they've done a blind child in the area and deaf child in the area. So I don't know what makes this any different. Asking this for my son, I believe that it's going to keep a mindful presence for, for my children when it comes to drivers, because we live right off the freeway and we have a lot of people who cut through, who do not pay attention, and they will run through the stop signs in my area. With autism being something that's so prevalent, it's 1 in 54 children. So chances are, my child is not the only one in the area that could require one, but it's still an essential need to be able to keep him safe. I do everything I can to keep my son safe, including keeping alarms on the doors. I have locks, multiple locks on my doors, but also it doesn't change that there is opportunity for things like accidents to happen. For people with autism, it's found that children with autism are 44 times percent more likely to encounter road accidents than the typical, their typical developing counterparts. And based on a study from 2007, it cited that the third leading cause for five to nine, I'm sorry. I'm very sorry.
Can we talk a few more minutes?
I'm sorry, this has just been very rough day, I'm sorry.
Please go ahead.
I was just mainly coming because I just wanted autistic child in the area signs put for my son. And I just want to be able to keep him as safely as I possibly can. And I just wanted a request of the city could please just help my, my family and I. And if you would like a copy of, of my research that was done, I'm happy to, to give it to you guys. I'm sorry.
If you'd like, if you'd like to leave.
I'm so sorry.
You're absolutely fine. If you'd like to leave the research with our clerk, then she can make sure it gets to all of us. Or if you'd like to email it to us, whatever your preference would be.
I mean, I just, I was trying to come at the appropriate time. It's just my, I don't have anybody to keep my children, and they told me to come up for public comment to be able to speak on it, so.
You came at just the right time, and your kids have been keeping us well entertained.
I'm glad.
My divorce with a comment is terrible, so they run amok.
I just want to say thank you guys for your time, and I'm very sorry for being a wreck. It's just, this is a very emotional topic, and I'm just, a parent is doing their best that, that she can, so. I appreciate it, thank you.
We understand about children being an emotional topic. Thank you, Mrs. Ibanez.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
So we understand about children being a very emotional topic. Thank you for coming up.
Thank you.
Ms. Harrison?
Senior citizens walk slow. Laura Harrison. I have two requests. I am part of a poor generation of military, including the woman that's sitting back there. I love the flags in the park. I would kindly take, under, I would like you to take under consideration of flying these flags from the middle of May until after the Fourth of July. There are several days in May, June, and July honoring our veterans. And I think they deserve to have those flags up. On the 6th of June of 1944, my dad was on Omaha Beach taking pictures of what was going on during the invasion. Luckily, he came home. The other thing I want to ask you about is, at the last charrette I attended, it was an hour discussion about Woodward Avenue. Because of a sudden loud verbal outbreak, the meeting was closed before our time was up. Because of these circumstances, the meeting only lasted 40 minutes. And very few of the attendees were able, were able to discuss what they wanted to about Woodward Avenue. I live a block off of Woodward, and the suggestions for improvements for M1 in Royal Oak were not heard. I'm requesting another meeting regarding Woodward to be set up for the master plan. Woodward is a main part of Royal Oak's history in more ways than one. And also a part of my history since my great-grandfather bottled, had a bottling business. It was located at the foot of Woodward and the Detroit River. He bottled Strohs and Vernors. I would certainly appreciate that you take more, more attention, pay more attention to Woodward Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Anybody else for public comment? Yes, I'm back.
Hi, I'm Leslie Allen. I live at 4724 Cooper Avenue in Royal Oak. And I just want to talk to you about the sidewalk, not the sidewalk, the bus stops, putting down the cement. I have like a huge easement, so it's not like your normal little patch on the other side of the sidewalk. There's, my easement's probably greater than it is for me to you guys, like your wall back there. So I can't imagine a cement slab that you could put in that would actually make seniors be able to access it easier. Like especially if it's snowing or raining or doing whatever, unless you're taking literally my whole yard up with that cement slab. They're still gonna have to go through grass and mud and snow to get there. Also, who's gonna shovel that, be responsible for that, and things like that? I know it's not something that a lot of people have to worry about as much as we do, but when you live on a corner lot, I have about 16 pieces of sidewalk, so it goes around the house. We have, already have a lot of shoveling to do on top of our driveway. Also, we did try to make our driveway larger recently, and we were told we were not allowed to put any more cement on that side of the road. So it does seem kind of convenient that we could do it now. So that's a little disappointing in that. I would love to see the seniors be able to be more mobile. I'm 100% for the curb-to-curb service that Snort does provide. So I would love to see if it's, if we're able to take that money and spend it more on the curb-to-curb services, because seniors don't actually, or those with disabilities don't need to be struggling to get anywhere. Definitely not whatever part of my grass you guys don't cover with cement. Our, our front yard has been torn up multiple times in a row. We live on 14 Mile, so we did that whole waterway project. And unfortunately, our front yard is the main source of all the new water pipes that you put in. So we already did for two and a half years of having our yard ripped up. And we've spent the last couple of years trying to make that grass green again. So it'd be kind of sad to see it go away. But I do, HR and customer service, so I just want to thank you guys, because I know how hard it is to sit and listen to people who truly only come to you with complaints more than compliments. So thanks for what you do for the city.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Okay, anybody else? Running out of bodies here, okay. All right, last chance. Okay, public comment is closed. Move the meeting back up here to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to remove anything from the consent agenda?
It's been months. We do this every week. We do this every week, guys.
It's fun, it's part of our little routine. Okay, with that, the consent agenda consists of City Commission meeting minutes, May 22nd, 2023; City Commission special meeting minutes, May 30th, 2023; Approval to excuse absences of Commissioner Perusch pursuant to Royal Oak Charter, Chapter 3, Section 10; Claims, May 3rd, June 2nd, June 13th, 2023; Approval of purchase orders; Approval of Second Amendments to Fiscal Year 22, 23 Budgets; 2022 Police Department Annual Awards; 2022 Police Department Annual Report; Approval, Approval of Midwest Employers Casualty for Excess Workers Compensation Services; Approval of Extension Cedric Claims Management Services for Workers Compensation Services; Approval of Southeastern Oakland County Resource Recovery and Water Authorities Alternative Representative, Alternate Representative; Authorization to fill Department of Public Services vacancies; Authorization to submit Spark Grant; Library Request to fill vacancy; Approval of License Agreement 106 South Main Street Sidewalk Cafe; Contract Modification Professional Engineering Services 2124 Asphalt Reservicing Improvement, thank you; Contract Modification, Contract CAP 2240 Hamer Finch Wilkins Park; Approval of Oakland County Local Road Improvement Program Cost Participation Agreement; Contract Award for Fair Housing Testing Services; Approval of Professional Engineering Services Community Development Block Grant, Lockman Park and Clausen Park Improvements; National Opioid Settlement Updates and Approval of Opioid Remediation Project. Who wants to move those great items? Moved by Commissioner Dubach, seconded by Commissioner Douglas. Any discussion on these items? Okay, I'll call for the vote, on favor? All right, opposed? All right, consent agenda passes. We move on to eight Michigan liquor license. Yes, got the chief, all right.
Well, thank you Mayor Protem and members of the Commission. The Police Department received a request from Legacy League LLC to review a new proposed plan of operation to be located at 304 North Main Street in the City of Royal Oak. The Class C liquor license is currently being held in escrow in the City of Novi, and the applicants will be doing business as the Modern Vegan. The applicants don't anticipate renovating the existing space, which is formerly tapped coffee. The actual updates are just gonna be cosmetic. The applicants will be purchasing the Class C liquor license and the inventory for $100,000. And they will also lease the property from North Main Square LLC and make monthly payments for a term of five years. Neither applicants have any experience in the alcohol industry, but they are actively seeking a local management team to oversee the daily operations, and they're also looking to hire a general manager to help them succeed with a successful launch. If approved, the Modern Vegan will operate as a full-service vegan restaurant and bar, serving breakfast, appetizers, wraps, sandwiches, and full-course meals. And their requested hours of operation are from 9:00 AM to 1:00 AM, seven days a week. And the applicants anticipate the food-to-alcohol ratio to be 80% food to 20% alcohol. The total proposed interior seating is for 76 patrons, which includes 11 seats at the bar. And they're also requesting an outdoor service area that would have seating for 40 patrons, which would be operating in accordance with the Sidewalk Cafe agreement. The applicants are also requesting an entertainment permit to offer occasional live entertainment, such as a DJ or a one-to-three-person band. The applicants are investing substantially in this venture, and they're committed to succeeding. And after careful consideration, the Police Department does not anticipate this request to cause any additional strain on our staff. I will point out that in the audience this evening is the attorney, Ms. Kelly Allen, as well as both applicants here. I'm sure they're happy to take any questions from you. And just a reminder that this does require a public hearing, because it is a transfer into the city.
Yes, Ms. House, can you, Clerk House, can you remind me, does the public hearing come before we talk to the, to the applicants?
Yes.
Okay, so I should open the public hearing now? All right. So, anyone like to speak? We're opening the public hearing on this matter. Would anyone like to speak? The same rules apply as for public comment as was spoken earlier. Looks like Ms. Allen's coming, going for it.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, members of the City Commission. I am Kelly Allen, nice to see you all.
This is Jennifer Benson. This is Nastasha Burrell. And these are entrepreneurial women who are looking to start Modern Vegan Downtown. That building's been vacant for about four months, so it's really good to see somebody going in there. The amount of money that they are putting in is the liquor license, the inventory, and they're just sprucing it up. It's really turnkey in there, it's nice. All the equipment was there, and so they're just, they're, they're changing the colors and that kind of thing. So it should look really nice when, when they're ready to open, which will be as soon as we get them through this and liquor control. As the chief said, I do want to thank the chief and lieutenant and your city manager and your city attorney. Everybody does such a great job here getting through these things. I don't usually have to say anything after the chief talks, but I do want to introduce you to these young women. They both have a lot of experience entrepreneurial. They own their own businesses and have managed many employees. They both have, Jennifer, you have four kids, right?
Yeah.
So that's, that's management right there. And she, and, and you have two children. Yeah, so, so not only do they operate their businesses, but they, but they raise their families. Jennifer is, has management experience in a, in a, like a publishing company that does lots of different things with licensing, limited liability companies, trademarks, copyrights, that kind of thing. And Nastasha owns her own beauty salon, and before that, for six years, and before that, she was, she was on her own, as a beautician. They do plan to be on-site owners at first. They're gonna be here, their jobs are really flexible. They have good childcare, and they want to be in there at the beginning, and they are going to hire somebody local, hopefully somebody from Royal Oak. It's hard to hire people when you don't know exactly when you're gonna get open and you can't really get somebody on the payroll until that happens. So hopefully, they will have someone and a, and a good team in place really soon. They are both CHIPS trained, they've taken all the classes for that ahead of time. They do intend, as I said, to launch with, with a, with a great team. And they are here to answer any questions that you have. Their menu's pretty cool, it's, they call it vegan comfort food. I'm not really sure what that means, but they do, so they can answer those questions for you. Pretty good hours, breakfast and dinner, and hoping to fill this space and, and activate that space that's been vacant for a while.
Okay, I think maybe we'll finish the public hearing and then maybe call you back up for some questions, if that sounds good. Not sure if anyone else wants to speak, but I'll give them a chance so that maybe we can address some of the issues that come up. Anybody else for the public hearing? Looks like a no, public hearing is closed. Would you like to join us in the podium again so we can ask some questions? Anybody have any questions? The applicants or Ms. Allen? Commissioner Dubach?
I don't have any specific question, I just love to hear a little bit about the concept of vegan comfort food.
Yeah, so the vegan comfort food is both geared toward non-vegan and vegan. So comfort food is more like those meat alternatives that replicates what you may already be accustomed to if you're not vegan. So it really makes it an easy transition if you're trying to become vegan or if you just want some vegan food that's not so vegan-y, if that makes sense.
Great, thanks.
Getaway vegan.
Exactly. And it's not just for vegans, it's for anyone who'd like to try a healthy alternative to modern classics, like maybe mac and cheese, cheeseburgers, things like that, so.
Commissioner Hahn?
So kind of keeping in line with Commissioner Dubach's question. So will your cocktails and wines of your alcohol, would that also be vegan?
We'll have some, that is, for the most part, yeah.
So is it a 100% vegan restaurant, or is it a mixture?
So lots of alcohol aspect, but the food is 100%. Yeah.
Awesome. Mr. Colwell?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem. This seems like a great addition to the city. You know, it's tapped, was a great location also, it is beautiful, so I, it's, you have a great setup there, so I'm excited to see the personal flair you might add to that. Have you brought a chef on yet, or have you, have you explored the chef, or is that still in the process?
So yeah, we've listed to some people that we think are great prospects, and we're working really closely with them, so.
Perfect.
If everything goes well, we'll.
Yeah.
We'll be good.
And like what Ms. Allen said, it's hard to hire this far out, right?
Yeah, it is.
And we do, we're working with the project manager, Karen Khan, and she has a lot of experience opening restaurants, a vegan restaurant as well. And we're utilizing her team and her chef, her chefs to guide us and support us along the way, yeah.
Great, that's a great next question. So you have someone that's gonna help you, you know, there's entrepreneurs and then there's the restaurant business, that's not easy, so.
Oh, yes, yeah, she's, she had a business called the Nashbit, I'm not sure if you.
Oh, yeah.
But she's really, really popular in the vegan community, so.
That's great, well, this is, seems like it will be a great addition to the city. This is fun and exciting, and I'm excited for this today.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm excited too. I'm the only vegetarian up here, so not vegan, but closest you got up at this table, I think, so. Sir, yes, Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, I'd like to move approval of the, or acceptance of their plan of operation.
Moved by Commissioner Douglas, seconded by Commissioner Dubach. Any further discussion on this? Commissioner Dubach?
It sounds like a great addition to our wonderful selection of restaurants in Royal Oak. I wish you the best of luck. I'll be there as soon as you open the doors. My knowledge of vegetarian, so this would be a great option for us.
Can we walk downtown?
I will walk there.
All right, any further discussion? All right, I'll call for the vote, on favor? Aye. Can you oppose? All right, plan of operation is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck.
Right. Oh, Ms. Donahue, oh, so many traffic resolutions.
Yes, Mayor Protem and City Commissioners, tonight I'm here to present the recommendations from our Royal Oak Citizens Traffic Committee from their May 23 meeting.
May I interrupt? I apologize. On the last item, we had a, there is a motion that's needed for an entertainment permit.
Oh.
So, that was missed. I apologize for the interruption, so.
Anybody? Commissioner Douglas?
I'm going to move the entertainment permit.
I've got a, I have a motion by Commissioner Douglas.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Cole. Any discussion on the entertainment permit? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thanks.
We're good, we're good, we're good. Okay, all right. Entertainment permit almost also approved.
I'm sure we're done now.
Yeah, that's it. Just stay for five minutes. Okay, and Ms. Donahue, what you got?
Sure, thank you. So yes, we had our meeting on May 23 and tonight I have nine proposed resolutions for you. And of course, I'm happy to take any questions during or after, but I'll kind of go over each item briefly. The traffic committee voted unanimously on all of these except for two of the resolutions, and I'll note that when I get to those items in the discussion. And I brought you some visual aids so that you don't fall asleep. Okay, our first item was 6A, and this was a revisit of a previous item. This was traffic calming options for Maxwell Avenue between Kettlepa and 12 Mile Road. You may recall that we talked about this back at the, in February after our January Traffic Committee meeting. The neighborhood at that time was opposed to our initial plan of traffic calming that included some bump outs and a traffic calming island along the corridor. So we've brought a recommendation to the commission to allow speed humps on this road. However, this is a priority snowplow route, and so that doesn't meet our speed hump criteria, and the commission did not approve that request. They, you did not want to deviate from our criteria. So instead, the commission requested that we come up with a few other calming options that we could present to the neighborhood, get some additional feedback, and so that's what we did at our May meeting. So we came up with three additional options and I'll, I can go into details, but I'm just going to give you a really quick overview on each of them. The first one is to, very simple, just restriping of the road, adding a center double yellow line with parking lanes so that you have a 10-foot wide driveline. It feels a little more narrow. It might slow you down. It's, that's debatable, frankly. The second option was looking at traffic circles. So these are like mini traffic circles. We would put them at Cloverdale and at Woodsboro, and these are kind of zoomed-in views down here at each intersection. So they're small, they're 16, 17-foot diameter circles, just raised up, concrete with signs in them, and then a 15-foot lane around them. So you kind of have to slow down, veer off your direct path and continue on. So the idea is that that will slow down drivers. And then the third option that we looked at was doing a raised intersection at two locations, same locations as the previous circles. So this is at Cloverdale and at Woodsboro. This is similar to what we have on Kettlepa at Alexander, so it's kind of like a giant speed hump, if you will. In terms of cost, what I presented was least expensive to most expensive. This one has a pretty big price tag at $162,000. So we presented these to the neighborhood and to the traffic committee. We did notify the neighborhood so that they could come and voice any concerns or support for this. We had quite a few people show up to this meeting as well, and the majority of them requested that we do nothing. They didn't want any changes here. We did have one resident that was in favor of the traffic circles. And so after discussing this at length at the table, the committee, you know, considering that the request was originally brought forward by a resident who doesn't even live on Maxwell, the lack of a neighborhood support here, they voted five to two to make no changes to Maxwell and just kind of let this issue die at this time. So that was 6A. Item six, oh, sorry, this is the original option that we had for 6A, but you've seen that before.
So I'm deciding, really quick, can you zoom in on the traffic circles one more time just so we could see that bottom, yeah?
Sorry, it's a little blurry in this version.
Thanks.
Good? Okay. Okay, our next item was 6B. This is to look at speeding on Harrison east of Knowles and on Morse south of Harrison, so that's kind of these locations here. The traffic study showed that our 85th percentile speeds were 25 and 23 miles per hour, so no changes were recommended for this block. One of the committee members did make a motion that we study this again in a year with the thought that maybe traffic patterns will change and speeds could increase. So that's part of the motion for this one. Item 6C was a site distance request. So this was a request to restrict parking on, around the east Harrison, so really close to where that last item was, at Diamond Court. The concern is that when you're trying to leave Diamond Court, if cars are parked right up to that driveway, it's really hard to see incoming traffic and if you're safe to leave the driveway or not. The current site distance is only 41 feet if you were sitting there trying to turn and there were two parked cars. If we wanted to meet our minimum recommended site distance of 155 feet, we would have to get rid of parking in all of these red shaded areas, which is about five parking spots on a very busy park, like a lot of people park on this road because there's a lot of multifamily here. The green boxes just kind of show like what would be left over for parking, so really only four spots would remain if we went with that. The traffic committee is recommending kind of meeting in the middle here and just removing one parking space on either side of the driveway, and so that's what these red signs would indicate, no parking this side or no parking beyond signs. And that would give a little bit better site distance without an excessive removal of parking on that street. Our next item is 6D. This was a request for new stop signs on North Alexander at East University. This is right by Woodyard Park. And the idea here was to provide better crossing access for pedestrians getting to the park. None of the stop sign warrants here were met, and that would be for traffic volumes, for crash history, or for pedestrian volumes, or site distance. So none of those were met. However, this is a crosswalk that provides access to a park, and so consistent with what we've approved in the past, we're recommending installation of crosswalk striping and the warning crosswalk signs at this location. 6E was a congestion request. This is on Sylvan Avenue just south of 13 Mile Road. Basically, when cars park a little too close to the intersection, it can be kind of hard if you have two vehicles trying to pass each other there. And so we can move, there's an existing no parking beyond sign shown here 30 feet from the stop sign. We can move it another 14 feet south and without really affecting how many cars can park on that street and just give a little bit more wiggle room. And so that's the recommendation here is just to relocate that sign further, a little bit further to the south. 6F is near Upton Elementary. This was a request to install stop signs at the intersection of Nakota and Mankato. So that's kind of the middle intersection that kind of, along this stretch that fronts along the school property. Currently, there are four-way stops here at Hampton in Nakota. There's a four-way stop at Mandalay in Nakota. And then here at Mankato, it's just, you can drive through. There's no crosswalks, and in fact, there's signs there that they don't cross here, cross at Hampton or cross at Mandalay. However, when we went out to do pedestrian counts, we found that pretty much everyone ignores those signs and a lot of people cross there and a lot of students cross there, both in the morning and in the afternoon. We spoke with the school principal. He was in favor, even though it would kind of be three stop signs in a row. He thought that that would help improve safety around the school. So we're recommending new crosswalk ramps to allow you to cross north and south over the road, as well as a three-way stop there and the striping that goes along with the Our next item was 6G. This is what was discussed with one of the public comment items. This was a request to install a child with autism sign near the resident's home for her six-year-old autistic son. The staff recommendation here was initially not to install these signs. That's usually our stance when people ask for kind of special, like deaf child signs or blind child signs, mainly because there's not really studies that show they have an impact. So they're more of a feel-good measure as opposed to something that might really change driver behavior. However, in the past, they usually do get approved and we've improved, excuse me, we've allowed several of these signs in the past. This would be our first child with autism sign in the city of Royal Oak. So the traffic committee recommendation here, they wanted to move forward with two signs because the property is, it's a corner property, so technically there's four directions where cars could be coming towards the property. There are stop signs on Edgeworth for north and south traffic, so their thought was, let's just advise people east and west that don't have a stop sign there. And that's probably where most of the traffic is because right over to the right here is the Stevenson Service Drive, so a lot of cut-through traffic potentially could be using this. So the committee did recommend installing these two signs. This was a five to two vote for this item. Our next item is 6H. This was a request to install speed humps on Buckingham Road. This is between Greenfield Road and Woodward. Here, the petitioner provided a signed petition, had 83% of the residents on this block in favor of the speed humps, and 100% of the properties adjacent to the proposed speed humps were in favor of that. And so traffic committee is recommending approval of this item. And our final item is 6I. This is a request to install mid-block crosswalks on Irving Avenue, south of Parent Avenue, and of course, this is adjacent to Lawson Park as shown here. The first request that we got was just to do one mid-block crosswalk, and so staff had looked at that and recommended putting one here by the driveway for the condos just to try and minimize the parking impact on that street because we know a lot of people park there when they're going to the park. Then at the, the meeting itself, the petitioner modified the request and requested two crosswalks instead. One that would line up kind of at the south end with Dondaro, that's at the south end of the park by the workout facilities. Another crosswalk that lines up with the pathway that walks into the park, and then there, there's already an existing crosswalk up at the north end at Parent Avenue. So the idea here is to provide better access to the park itself, but also the hope is that it would provide some traffic calming on the street. The traffic committee did recommend moving forward with the two crosswalks here. I, just off the cuff, don't have any opposition to moving this crosswalk a little bit further north to get closer to that driveway and minimize the parking impact. The original thought with where it is located here is that it lines up really nicely with the walkway that goes into the park, but you don't need that in order to access that if you're trying to cross the road there. So this northern crossing, it's only about 230 feet away from this existing crosswalk, so it, from a staff perspective, it seemed a bit excessive to have the two, but I don't have any major objection to it. And the committee did vote in favor of this for the, for the two locations. The only thing to make note of here is that this would eliminate, again, depending on where those crosswalks are, three to four parking spots from that road. So it might be a little bit tighter for parking in that area. I think that's all for traffic committee. I'll turn it back over to you.
No, it was very concise for all those. Any questions for Engineer Donahue? Concise and complete. Oh, Commissioner Cole?
So, a lot of these seem pretty easy to go about, but then there's Maxwell, and this is something we've talked about at the table, of what to do on that street, right? Like Maxwell, we've talked about it here and we sent it back, like we had a recommendation before, you know, of traffic calming of some sort because of the speed. So I guess, so you talk about the current speed, you know, why, how we got to the point where we had two different recommendations and if traffic calming is actually needed on this road.
So when this was originally studied, I believe the speed was 31 miles per hour. That was the 85th percentile speed, and we did measure it at two locations and it was consistent. It was 31 or 32, but that's off memory. Definitely above 30, though. And so that's the point where we say, well, we should do something to slow speeds on this street. So we looked at traffic calming because we knew speed humps were not, at least it didn't meet our criteria, so that wasn't our first go at it. We went with the bump outs and the calming island.
Okay. And can we look at the circles again too? I just hit, you know, I haven't seen them. I think this is.
Can you see them? They're cute.
They're, so they're, they're small, right? They're not?
Yeah, they're relatively small. You know, if you're, if you're driving and you have to meander around it, it's not a huge inconvenience, but you'll have to step on the brake. I think the biggest issue is people coming and turning left from Cloverdale or Woodsboro. You have to kind of hug around it and do kind of a big turn to make a left turn. I expect a lot of people will ignore that and just kind of cut through illegally if traffic is clear, just knowing that's what a lot of people do. A couple of, you didn't hear that from me, chief. A couple complaints that we heard were people that lived, I think we heard from 1212 here who has a driveway really close. He was concerned about being able to turn left. To me, it's, you're already past the circle and you'll make a left turn into your driveway, so I don't totally see that. Backing out might be a little bit more of a pain. You have to watch out for that island before you back out and head to the south. And similar idea here, like the driveway is somewhat close to the circle. These were really the only two intersections, though, that we could install something that wasn't like right in the middle of somebody's driveway. So we're kind of limited on where we could do improvements along the corridor.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Dubach?
So I, I think the traffic circles are an elegant solution, given that there is a, you know, we've measured that there's an issue there, but it sounds like the residents are not interested in it on that street.
That was a very strong feedback. Yes.
I mean, I think it's, I think it's a reasonable fix. It is the right way to approach it. It's aesthetically pleasing, but again, this is a residential street and they identified the problem. They appeared not to like any of the solutions. Is not viable, that we're going to have an officer permanently stationed there. That's just, I understand the request, but that's certainly, the implication that that doesn't cost the city anything is not accurate. A police officer's time is incredibly valuable. So, you know, being there from time to time to have a presence, great, but obviously that's not a permanent solution. Given that the residents don't seem to want any of the actual permanent solutions that we could propose, I'm happy to support the traffic committee's recommendation unless someone really wants to force the issue in the street. But I'd rather that they like it. I'm not going to spend $30,000 and fix the problem only to have everyone on the street be mad about the solution.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So after our last meeting, I mean, I was like, none of the solutions were good. Nobody was happy. And so I really started paying attention to Maxwell, making sure I made it part of my routes, you know, at different times of day. And like one of the assertions at the original meeting was, you know, we don't want the bump outs because we want to park on the street because cars park on the street. That is not true. Occasionally, they do, but driveways are pretty long and you just, I did not see any occasions where cars parked on the street. Now, if you want to slow traffic, cars parked on the street are good, as former mayor used to say, just throw some metal out there and people will slow down. But as Commissioner Dubach says, if, if people don't want that and if there's no consensus on any sort of action here, I'm happy to not spend money on something that, you know, half the people there would hate already. So I concur with Commissioner Dubach on that.
In the form of a motion or no?
Can I?
Oh. We got a bunch of items here.
All right, Commissioner Cole?
You know, just hearing that, I wonder if then, Commissioner Douglas says this often, I wonder if the temporary fix here might, you know, painting lines, see if that slows up down, only because like we know that there's an issue. Like we know that's a 25 mile per hour street, it's 31, this is residential, so there's a safety consideration here. If it were not a residential street, we would be, you know, with the state law, we would increase the speed on this street to match the 85th percentile. So I wonder if that relatively inexpensive paint option, I don't know if there's, if there's any discussion for residents about paint at the traffic committee?
I would say a couple people said, well, if you have to do something, fine. I can live with that, but I don't like that either, you know? But I didn't hear any strong objections. Sorry, I know that's very blunt. It should be better. But the, the consent, there wasn't major opposition to that as opposed to the more permanent concrete fixtures that were being proposed.
I, so look, it's a little at the table. Personally, I would like to find some way to slow it down, you know, that the issue has been brought before us, but I will see to the general will here.
So while we're on the list here, on item nine, you mentioned that crosswalk on the[1738.56] So while we're on the list here, on item nine, you mentioned that crosswalk on the north end. No objection to, I think it was north side, right?
Yeah.
Upton?
Yeah, moving it closer to that driveway.
No, not Upton, no, Lawson.
Sorry, Lawson.
Gotcha.
Moving it closer to that driveway, like we heard at public comment, there's no engineering reason why that's not viable. There's not already a curb cut where the entrance is, where we currently have it lined up?
Correct. Yeah, we could move that, no problem.
Okay. So, yeah, I have no problem with that either. So, where are we at here? I really had no issue. I understand what you're saying with the sign, but, sorry, the, I'm flipping from issue to issue, the child with autism sign. Awareness does no harm, and, you know, potentially, even if we haven't been able to measure it from an engineering standpoint, can do some good, just raising awareness on the street and in the neighborhood. So I can't see any issue, any of the recommendations that I disagree with, unless I'm missing anything. So with that one amendment to item nine.
I.
Why is it saying, oh, agenda item nine?
Yeah, it's I.
Item nine, item I. Forgive me.
6A.
Yes. I. I'll move for approval of the resolutions as presented.
Motion by Commissioner Dubak, second by Commissioner Hunt. Any further discussion on these items? Commissioner Hunt?
I just have a quick question for Ms. Donahue. Most of these have been unanimous by the members of the Traffic Committee, but as it relates to the autistic sign, there were two that were not. Was that simply because there's no measurable benefit, or that it actually slows down, or do you recall why those were not?
No, honestly, I was surprised that it was a split vote, because my thought was that everyone was going to vote yes for it. So I didn't have any, anything I can really share for sure as to why they voted against it.
All right.
Just kidding.
Commissioner Kula?
You know, there was an item, speeding on Harrison 6B around that area. There is, I appreciate that we did study, we see that the speed's 21 miles an hour. This is, you know, my backyard. There's a modified car, and when they get going down the road, they sound like a rocket ship. Like, the muffler is so loud, so I see why residents are complaining that you think it's very fast. Because you hear the person every now, you think they're speeding, but clearly, it's, I mean, it's not, it's a modified muffler, but it's annoying. But I'm happy to see that, you know, the science shows us it's not too fast.
Recommend that you don't move closer to Woodward, if you find that annoying.
Wait, wait. I'm in the corner of 696 in Woodward. We hear everything down there.
You got it all. All right, anybody else? Any further discussion? Okay, a call for the vote. All in favor? Aye, aye. Any opposed? All right, we have, that was quicker than I thought it was going to be. All right, moving on to item 10, bus stop accessibility. This is probably you as well.
It is, thank you. So yes, the city's sustainability plan and also our aging in place plan have goals to improve accessibility for our public spaces, and those would include bus stops. And so staff had spent some time over the winter visiting all the bus stops in the city and noting where we could potentially install a bus stop access pad so that patrons don't need to walk over uneven grass or potentially wait in driveways while they're waiting for a bus. We also met with representatives from Smart Bus, and they did not have any objections to our locations or to our plans here. And so I have a map here that kind of shows all the different locations where we could put new bus stop pads in. There's 57 of them total. The green belt width does vary, but in general, where we have space, there would be a concrete pad that's six and a half feet wide along the back of curb, and then extends eight feet out into the grass area where you can fit it. A lot of times, we only have a five-foot green belt, so you'll just fill that space between the sidewalk and the curb. But ideally, for accessibility, for wheelchairs that need to load off onto a bus, excuse me, off of a bus, the eight foot is the recommended distance there. And then if we have a very wide green belt, which we do in some areas, we would then install a five-foot sidewalk that connects that pad to the existing public sidewalk. And so we sent notices to all the properties who could potentially have a pad installed adjacent to their property. We did hear from one property, and she was here at public comments tonight as well, and that was location number five. I'll just zoom in here really quick. This is at Cooper and 14 Mile Road. If you zoom in really close, it is a wide green belt. The concern was, it just wouldn't look good. She didn't really want it there next to her home. And she did note that there was already a bus stop. I believe it's kind of closer here to Woodward by the alley along this area. That's fully paved, and so she was saying, you know, why do we really need to do that? That was the only person that we heard negative feedback from. I'm surprised we didn't hear more, frankly, but that was all the feedback that we got. So if approved, this work would be added to our 2023 sidewalk program. The estimated cost using those contractor prices is $68,000. The resolution here includes a recommendation that ARPA funding be used for this item. Originally, when we had laid out the ARPA allocations, we only budgeted $50,000 for this work. And so we're about $18,000 above this, primarily because of the extra traffic control that's needed. MDOT is very specific about what they want on Woodward, and that's an antenna radiator truck and a lot of extra stuff that wasn't included in the contractor's original bid. So that's why the price is a little bit higher than we originally expected. Some of the locations on here are along Woodward, as you can kind of see on the map here. We ran it by MDOT. They did not have any general issues with the proposed plan, but they did note we'll need specific plans for each location and apartment, of course. So they could potentially push back, but it doesn't seem likely on any of these locations. There were a couple locations on Woodward I did want to bring to your attention. You've got to remember where I have it here. Our first one, there's only two of them here I wanted to bring to your attention. One is number 19. This is on Woodward Avenue, the northbound side. This is between Lafayette and Parent. This is just one spot where we'd have to take out quite a bit of this nice landscaping that they have here. I assume it looks nice in the summer when everything's growing. So, you know, that'd be an eight to 10-foot wide swath of that landscaping that would go away. And the same would be here at number 21. This is northbound Woodward. This is at Forestale, so just a little bit further north. Same thing, there's a nice landscaped area here, and so we'd be disturbing the north end of that landscaped area. Everywhere else, we're able to install these pads without affecting trees or planting beds, driveways, et cetera. Pretty easy just to fit them right in the grass. That's existing. I did want to mention that these are great in the temperate months, but in the winter, there's no requirement that they be shoveled. There's not somebody that's going to be out there salting or shoveling them unless the adjacent property owner just opts to do it. So that's all I have on that item.
Thank you, Engineer. You seemed to answer our questions before we get a chance to ask them. Does anybody have any further questions? Commissioner Dubak?
So is that the standard throughout the SMART system, that there is no requirement, neither SMART nor the city keeps these accessible in any way throughout the colder months?
SMART takes care of their shelters, I believe. And so we've got a handful of them throughout the city. So I do believe they have people that come, and they pick up the trash, and they take care of snow, and they'll salt them. But that's it. So they, they were like, these pads sound great, but we usually only participate when it comes to shelters and like the bigger facilities where we have a lot of ridership. Frankly, a lot of these really only have like zero to four riders going to these stops, so they're not highly used. But is it the chicken or the egg? You know, are people going to come once, if there's more pads and more accessibility there?
I completely agree when I hear like, it's not worth investing there because no one goes there. It's like, why build a sidewalk there? No one walks there, which we've heard before. I think this is basic city infrastructure and a basic responsibility of ours to ensure the transit is accessible to the extent that we can afford to invest in it. So this might just be a first step toward improving access, but I certainly think it's the right approach and a worthwhile investment of resources that hits on a lot of our goals as a city.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Just looking at the Cooper Avenue one for a moment, looking at Google Maps, there is an existing bus stop in that East Monroe Road. Correct?
These are all existing bus stops with a sign, just not a access to walk to the edge of the road.
So this would just add a pad, which is on the side of, and I appreciate the resident came out and, you know, how tough this infrastructure of your house, but this is on the side of the house. It's not the front of the house, I believe.
I believe so. They do have a Cooper address, their driveway, and, I mean, they come to their house off of 14 Mile Road. And that's a big chunk of their green space is out there along 14 Mile Road.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, it would be nice if these concrete pads were shoveled in the winter when there is snow, but without them, people are walking through wet grass and mud and snow during the rest of the year. So I'm willing to, I mean, I think that's a fair trade-off. And I'm surprised at, you know, the low total cost of this. I think this is a good investment. And the location, I mean, particularly looking at the one on Cooper, you have to remember that Eaton Street comes in there, and that's like a major access point for eastern Birmingham. You go down Eaton, and you've got an industrial district and a commercial area and some multifamily. So if I were coming up Eaton to go east, I wouldn't want to walk 1,000 feet back west to Woodward in order to catch the bus. And the fact is that SMART has decided where these go. We don't, we can't really influence where the location of the bus stops. So I think that this is for the public good, and I think broadly, it will benefit many people. And I'm, in fact, I'll make a motion to approve it.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas, second by Commissioner Dubak, Commissioner Hunt?
I did have one more question for Ms. Donahue. I understand that in some of these, there'll be some foliage that needs to be removed. Are there any tree roots or anything that's in the path that could possibly be damaged?
I don't think so. What's nice about these is you have a little bit of flexibility. You could be five feet away from the sign, and it's still very clear that you're at that bus stop. I think there was only one or two where they were somewhat close to a tree, but we were able, like I said, just shift it a little bit further in the other direction, and we should be just fine with those.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Dubak?
Just one more question. I think you said this, but every one of these will be connected to the sidewalk network, correct?
Yes.
Because there was a question about that at public comment. Yeah, again, maybe it'd be more convenient, more accessible, less stigmatizing by actually making it a formal bus stop thing. It's all good things.
Sounds good to me. Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, passes. Here they come. We'll get you some money from that 696 sign we don't want anymore.
I do want it.
Sure, I want it.
I wonder if it costs like $100,000.
It's not in my budget.
$1.5 million.
Okay, Ms. Barkman, we have now boards, commissions, and committee review.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and commissioners. It's lovely to see you this evening. So we're back for another part, and hopefully, maybe the last part of the boards and commissions' review this evening. So the first part up that I wanted to talk about was Parks, Recreation, and Senior Services and the potential of splitting that off into a Parks and Recreation and then a Senior Services Aging in Place to be finalized and named at a later date. And just kind of wanted to touch base a little bit with you about what you all wanted that board to do. Generally, our boards and commissions are here to advise you all, and so wanted to make sure that your input was included. The Parks, Recreation, and Senior Services Committee has talked about this a little bit. They are excited to see movement, and were proactive and included a letter, I think you all received it, from Sarah Kinninger, their chair. We've also included that letter in your packet for your convenience related to the board's discussion and what they would like to see. And I'm sure that Commissioner Macy can highlight anything that was missed or add any additional thoughts from their discussion. So wanted just to have a little bit of discussion on this one about what you all wanted to see from a potential Aging in Place Senior Services Board.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Barkman. I'm going to start off a little bit here, just to give some background that, so we've been talking about this, like, through the boards and commissions process, and it, so the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, we sort of had in our mind for some time now that this is going to be happening imminently, and probably the situation worse, right? Because we keep thinking like, oh, these are going to be portioned, you know, these are going to be separated, and this is going to be dealt with by another board. But it hasn't been yet, and so there's been some delay in some of the things we've talked about in terms of our strategic goals and the Aging in Place Plan and things that we really want to be focusing on as a community. We haven't had our full attention there, and we keep thinking we're going to have a board that does that, but we haven't. So there's just a feeling of urgency to this, that we, this is a priority for us as a city, and separating these out will make that clearer. And there was a lot of discussion about the fact that we just passed a millage for both of these general purposes, and it seems only right that we should have a board of community members and, like, at the lead, looking through these plans. We now have an Aging in Place Plan. We now have a Parks Master Plan, looking forward for the city and bringing back advice to this body. So I think, as was mentioned, like, we're eager to move forward on this. I think this commission is, too, eager to make some changes to the committees. So, anyway, curious to hear everyone's thoughts. Commissioner Dubak? Oh, sorry.
You're free.
No, go ahead.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Yeah, I think it's a no-brainer to go back to having a separate senior advisory committee. The previous senior citizens committee was one of the first committees I was assigned to in my first term. And while it did bring folks together, there really wasn't a specific objective or agenda to pursue. Much of the conversation was involved around parks and the senior center and recreation. And so at the time, a few years later, the city consolidated a lot of our committees and eliminated some others and combined responsibilities. And that made sense, because much of their concern focused around things that were already in the purview of the Parks and Rec Committee. But now that we have a robust plan that we need to really drive results from, I think it makes perfect sense to have this committee, and to the questions that we've been presented with, really take a leadership role in advising the city as like, all right, how are we ordering these priorities? Where is the low-hanging fruit, and what action is needed from us to make that happen? So that's what I would like to see coming from this board, is now that we have a plan, really kind of start working on timelines, looking at the resources we have available, make recommendations to us to consider on how to activate.
Yes, I do look forward to information from Mr. Brake's office, from the staff, as to how the Aging in Place Plan will be implemented. It's not really the role of volunteers on a committee to actually implement a plan. This is a staff function. But certainly, with the right composition, you can have committee members who have expertise, who can bring subject matter knowledge to the staff, who can liaise, supplement the staff's effort to liaise with county, state, even regional and federal programs, because others throughout southeast Michigan are awakening to the graying of our population and developing programs to address it. It will provide accountability. Somebody will be minding the store and making sure that we're addressing the elements of the Aging in Place Plan. It will help us maintain that relationship with AARP, because our status as an age-friendly community is designated by AARP, is based on our implementing the plan that they have approved. So for those reasons and those articulated by Commissioner Dubak, I do, and I'm sensitive to the fact that, as in her report, Ms. Barkman pointed out, the limitations of our staff and the ability to staff all the committees and boards that we have, because it is important that professional staff be assigned to those committees. But, so I'm sensitive to that, but I think this is a case where we need to establish a body to oversee our Aging in Place Plan and our services.
Oh, Mr. Brake?
So, thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. So in the budget document, this was listed as a priority. We did have a couple of solutions that didn't quite make it into the final cut of how we can provide that staff support. So I hope when we go to reorganize and bring something back, that it will be deemed favorably. But certainly, these plans that we have taken them as, that are important to implement, I think the other thing that I would suggest is you consider appointees to this committee, that this is a working sort of board. It's, we're not looking for individuals who have, say, do this or do that, but rather, piggybacking on Commissioner Douglas's point, if there's someone that has a industry or specific expertise that they can lend that of helping to implement. So there's a distinction. There's some committees that we can look at. I would say, like, the Civic Foundation, that's a perfect example of more of a working type of board, where you have individuals that are really carrying out those tasks. Having that combination, always my concern, as you hear me speak of this before, we want any group like this to be successful. So after the first year, that we can tout that we've accomplished many things, as opposed to, you know, how are we going to do this? Who's going to take care of that? And so, but I see a pathway forward that we can ensure success.
Okay. I feel like that sounded like the opposite of what Commissioner Douglas said, but it does want them to be working.
I feel at 11 is what we're hearing here.
What does that mean?
Commissioner Dubak?
Word of foul.
No, I think there are, we have boards that we really see this model working, I think. Environmental advisories have evolved into being a very, you know, expert-driven, active board. That isn't just saying the city should do this and the city should do that, but it's actually spending time and we're recruiting people with expertise in the... actually spending time and we're recruiting people with expertise in that field. We've, I mean, Parks and Rec is not just a Board that says do this, do that, but really goes out and does the late work and looks at what's going on in our parks and brings back that information, right? Historical Committee, we appoint people with expertise, not just a passion for history, but people that can actually look at architecture and do that work and bring that back. And all that saves city staff time while ultimately we do need the professionals to gather it up and bring it to us. Those committees are doing a lot of work. There was one more I had in my head that I forgot.
Traffic.
Traffic. Oh, Veterans Affairs Committee, you know? They work, they work with staff, but actually are on the ground making those things happen. And so, what's that?
Commission for the Arts.
Commission for the Arts. Oh, my gosh. Has done so many things, like put in so much sweat equity into the city beyond meeting and having ideas and saying, city, do this. So, I think it is a model that we've shown can work really well. Yes, it does require staff time, but we're tapping not just, you know, a sense of people wanting to give back to the city, but really want to leverage their expertise on behalf of the city, in service to the city. And I think that's, this is certainly a committee that that model will work for.
So, there's no resolution for this? So, is it just really sort of getting, getting information to you as a, as a direction to bring back an ordinance that would create such a body?
Yes. So, there's no resolution this evening and Commissioner Purush and the mayor are absent, so I'll reach out to them and try to encourage their feedback as well so that that way we kind of take everybody's thoughts into this and we'll be working on that ordinance with the interim city attorney and have that back to you hopefully very soon.
Fantastic.
Actually, I have one more question. So, if we do take out the seniors portion of the Parks and Rec and Senior Board, would we also be looking to shrink that more a little through attrition at that point? Because it's a nine or is it 11-person Board?
No, it's nine.
Nine. So, maybe get that back down to seven people then?
I think that was the idea. I think they, I think it was smaller before they were combined.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, we can, I can, we'll take a look at the Parks and Recreation because that one also had several Boards that were folded into it through resolution, I think. And we may look to do a little bit of just kind of clarification on that Board, not only with the membership, but potentially some of the other functions and just make sure we're all current on what that Board is supposed to do on all the pieces, so.
Great.
Thank you so much.
All right. And Historical Commission?
One second. Okay, so the Historical Commission, so this Board is a Board that helps us with the Orson Star House. We have a number of dedicated volunteers. They spend a lot of time, they're very much a working Board that is putting together programs, events, and as I learned through this process, they actually clean the house at the Orson Star House. And so, wanted to, this is a group, as we went through like the process elements, that would probably be subject to a little more staff support, be creating an annual report for you guys so you were aware of what was going on and things like that. But the, the idea arose to potentially look at, is this something that we could work with the Historical Society to manage this process or this function differently? And so, what I'm looking for from, from you all this evening is, is this something that you guys as a Body want to explore, what that might look like? My assumption is we would have some type of contract for service as we do with other folks for like the Metro Detroit Youth Assistance and things like that, that would outline some of the different specifications and roles and responsibilities and things like that to continue managing the Orson Star House and probably talk about other resources that would be needed. So, at this point, I'm really just looking for, are you guys as a Body interested or not?
Well, folks, are we? Commissioner Hunt?
I think it's at least worth exploring. I know many on each Committee are, there's some intersection between the members. I'm not going to say they all do, you know, typically the same things, but I think it's at least worth exploring to see if it would be a feasible project to combine them.
Commissioner Dubak?
So, is this in line with, in previous years and last time we looked at Boards and Committees, we looked at combining Historic District Commission, Historic District Study Committee, Historical Commission. I can't remember if we landed, ran into legal or political barriers in that conversation.
Legal.
Was it legal?
The Historical District and Study separately.
As separate entities. But like we did with Planning and Brownfield, can we not just make them the same Body that adjourns the first meeting, then begins the next meeting?
They effectively, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Colow, would you like to be our attorney for the night?
I have had many conversations with this trainer about this. They almost effectively are, and the overlap in the coverage on the District Study and the District Committee are pretty much the same. There is some variation from time to time of a couple of people just because, once again, looking at expertise, because one really studies and then one follows up on it, much like Planning and Brownfield. It's a lot of the same idea. But by say-saggy, we have to have them both. This is the third one. This, this Commission just is responsible for the Orson Star House itself and they, you know, it's open, I think, a Saturday week during the summertime and events like that. But they, the people who serve on the Orson Star Committee are very much dissimilar from everyone, the other two Committees. They're not a lot of the same people at all. There might be one, I think Leslie Snow might overlap in some of them, but for the most part, it's a completely different entity set up.
And how do you feel about it combining with the Historical Society?
Oh, so, okay. It's my turn. It's this side now.
Well, you just took it, so.
So, I actually talked with Ms. Barkman about this originally. It seems like an opportunity for us to potentially maybe better utilize this House. I think it, there's a lot of good things we could do with that, too. Not to take away from the work that's being done there now because, you know, like you said, they're literally cleaning the house. This is a very dedicated group of volunteers. I'm wondering if we can combine resources with the Historical Society to see if they have any ideas, if there's a value add, if we can partner up with them somehow. So, I think at the very least, it's worth a conversation to see how we can improve this in the city. The Historical Society already has, you know, they're a museum, they're the history keeper of the community with an old firehouse, so this could be a really good collaboration. Or they may simply not want to because they don't have the funds, resources, or time to do it, but it's a conversation.
Anybody else? How do we feel about Commissioner Colow's suggestion, which I think is answering Ms. Barkman's question, that she does seek out the Historical Society and ask about collaboration? Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, as Commissioner, to expand on, Commissioner Colow said, the Historical Commission deals with object, with the building and objects, and so does the Orson Star House. So, in that respect, they have similar focuses, similar missions. I, I hope that, I mean, the Historical Society is all run by volunteers. Some of them have been in their position for quite a long time and may at some point not want to be in that position. So, I, I hope we will be imaginative in bringing resources to, to that marriage, as it were, to help make sure they've got the long-term ability and resources to oversee both endeavors. I just, I think it's tricky, so. But it's worth exploring.
There you go, Ms. Barkman. Two votes for worth exploring.
I think Commissioner Hunt said it, too.
Three votes for worth exploring.
She's the first one to say it.
We say so, too. Okay. So, explore.
We will move forward with exploring. This is an option. I would anticipate this part will come, I want to try to wrap up some of the other Boards and Commissions pieces quickly and then start exploring this. So, I would anticipate this may also take some time just to kind of explore with both the Historical Commission as well as the Historical Society and kind of gauging interest and resources needed. We'll probably take some time to do that and I'll keep you guys updated through Mr. Brake's updates that he occasionally sends you guys and we'll go through that until we're ready to have an actual agenda item in front of you. Throughout that process, I would just encourage you all to continue to share feedback on kind of what you're hearing and whether or not this is maybe something you're kind of interested in or not. With that, that concludes all of the Boards that I was going to talk about with the Boards and Commissions' review. So, anything we have not talked about, would just see some potential changes with the process pieces that we've already talked about. If you have other Boards, reach out to either Mr. Brake or myself and we'll cross that bridge on another meeting. But from here, we're just really wrapping up and moving into the next phase of this project, which would actually be bringing forward the ordinances and the resolutions and everything for you guys. As I conclude this part, I do want to just touch on the staff piece of this a little bit. We're probably really hitting that point of every department manages multiple Boards. And if there are future Boards that you want to add, I would encourage the Commission, whenever that is, to have a conversation about what that staff capacity looks like and are there things that can come off the plate to come on the plate? Are there other projects you can slow down? How do you want to have that staffing conversation? Because it is, it is challenging to manage multiple Boards at the same time for a lot of staff members and, and keep everything straight and moving forward. So, I really want to encourage that conversation down the road if we need to. The other piece I'm going to throw out there a little bit, and I put it in the memo, is maybe at some point in the future, we want to have a conversation about whether or not you need a partial FTE that is dedicated to Boards and Commissions. Having had one in a previous city that I worked in, it makes a huge difference. They're going to be the person who is helping to do the orientation, who helps with the appointments and the recruitment process. They're going to be able to help you with any time there's conflict on a Board and having those difficult conversations, you know, about whether or not a Board can do something or not do something. They can help create the bylaws for groups, they can help update those things. Wherever that sits within the organization, it might be something that would be good to consider potentially in the future and how that potentially would sit. So, throwing that out there is food for thought. And with that, that is all I have for the evening.
I have something. I was, say, just so for both of these two that were, that were talking about and some consideration of what you were just saying, when the Parks and Rec Board was discussing this, I think two meetings ago, the Director of the Senior Center was, seemed eager, and again, you know, she's there in front of all of us, so maybe, who knows? But she seemed eager to take on a role. She seemed to want to be one of the liaison staff liaisons for one of those committees. So, just bear that in mind as you're thinking about, you know, spreading the load. She seemed like that would be something she would like to do as part of the role that she already has. And then I was going to suggest, just for the Historical Commission and the Historical Society, maybe the next step would be to invite the Historical Society to come to our Historical Commission with, with the knowledge that, hey, the city commission was saying that maybe this, there could be a partnership here, and just invite them to see the work that each other does. It seems like that would be an easy first step for that. So, yes, thank you for your work. I'm looking forward to seeing some of these ordinances come through. I'm going to go to Commissioner Colow and then Commissioner Douglas.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Just really quick, you just mentioned at the end there about bylaws and all the, you know, looking back at my notes, we actually spoke about bylaws months ago when this, when we were under the CERD. And we had already said, I thought the process was in place, all the bylaws were going to be reviewed and updated. So, that, are you talking about future bylaws for future committees?
Yes. So, the Human Rights Commission has been working on their bylaws for the past several months. So, sometimes that's an undertaking in and of itself. And so, in, like, for example, in my previous city where we had a dedicated staff member, she would go through and say, hey, it's been about 10 years since your group, maybe you want to look at these? She would work with groups as they got set up to kind of have some of those discussions and be able to help with some of the research around different types of bylaws for different groups and, and how that fits in with their specific purpose.
Okay. But I just want to make sure, this is my understanding before, we are updating bylaws of the existing committees right now?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll agree with Ms. Barkman's thought that the, addressing the Historical Commission versus the Historical Society may not be on the front burner here. And I will just give credit to the members of the Historical Commission. As we've heard, they do all that work themselves. They plant the flowers, they clean the place, they host the tours. And, and I think that machine is working well and, and it ain't broke and so perhaps we don't need to fix it as quickly as perhaps we want to address some of our other priorities. And then I'll, I'll repeat something that Commissioner Macy and I have talked about on a number of occasions. Having a, like, part-time person to manage our Boards and Commissions means we also have someone managing our volunteers. You know, recognizing them, keeping track, keeping a database of them, knowing who serves, when, making sure that when they're termed out of a, of a Commission, they get proper recognition. So, I, I'll stick a pin in that and come back around to it because I think it's a good idea.
You want to add some more employees, don't you? I knew you'd come around. All right, thank you, Ms. Barkman.
You're very welcome.
And now we'll move on to Brownfield. That sounds like you, Mr. Twing.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and Commissioners. You do have a staff recommendation to abolish an existing Brownfield plan at 1148 South Washington Avenue. It's commonly referred to as the Roy Development. The developer in this case has been reimbursed all of their entitled reimbursement money, the $177,000 roughly, under that plan is the max they can be reimbursed. As indicated in the staff memo, it is possible for the Commission to continue five years of capture that could potentially be put into the revolving fund, but that's also capped that we can't exceed the amount that's reimbursed to the developer. And as we've indicated, it's most likely that we'd, we'd hit that cap in next fiscal year anyways. So, there's, and given that there's not really a request to do anything with the balance in the Brownfield Fund, we are recommending that you abolish this one. That would let the excess capture go back to the city and the other taxing jurisdictions. The city would realize roughly $70,000 out of that $109,000 that's left or that was captured. This would be the seventh Brownfield that you've abolished. There was one last year, one prior year, two in 2019, and then it goes back to 2018. It would also leave you with nine outstanding Brownfield plans. Woodward Corners is one, and again, that's a significant dollar amount that would be coming in at some point. So, the need for the funds that would be in this, we don't see as necessary. So, we are recommending that you abolish this Brownfield plan.
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Twing. Any questions or motions? Mr. Dubak? Commissioner Dubak, sorry.
So, is this within the DDA?
Pardon me?
Is the Roy in the DDA?
No, it's on Washington.
It's on Washington. Okay. So, the entire, the vast majority of the capture would come to the city when it's abolishing it? Makes sense to me?
It only took three years to pay him back, so.
Right.
How much sense does it make? So much you want to make a motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, Woodward Corners, I think, is $3 million, so it's going to take a little bit to pay him back.
Motion by Commissioner Dubak. Second by Commissioner Douglas. Any further discussion on the Roy? All right, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, passes and is abolished. Thank you, Mr. Twing. Next up, oh, sign ordinance, Mr. Twing. I'm real curious about this one.
This actually came from a recommendation from the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission had asked staff to look at provisions that would prohibit tube lights that would go around the windows. You've seen a few of them around town. There was a provision similar to that that was added to the marijuana establishments in the zoning ordinance. What staff put together, though, was an amendment to the sign ordinance. The basis for that was we have string lights and other types of lights that are in the sign ordinance that are prohibited. The other benefit is also there is non, there's no non-conforming clause established in the sign ordinance. So, the procedure that we would be following is if someone came in for a new sign, a change of business or, or just new signs, they'd have to show compliance. So, we would be able to get rid of those tube lights in those situations as well, or they'd have to apply to the Planning Commission for a variance. have to apply to the Planning Commission for a variance. So rather than them continuing for infinitum at those that may have them, we would also have an opportunity to have those removed as well as prohibit them in other locations. So that was the Planning Commission's discussion. The sign ordinance is a separate standalone ordinance, and so it's in front of you with a Planning Commission recommendation. It's not associated with the zoning ordinance. It is a first reading. And as I said, the wording is very similar to what was already passed and is part of the marijuana establishments prohibiting similar type lights at those locations.
Thank you, Mr. Twing. I have a question. So this came from the Planning Commission. Was there, have people been talking about this? Did people come and ask for it? Or was it just sort of came up spontaneously from the commission members themselves?
Well, it really came from two Planning Commission members.
I know one.
One City Commission member.
Does the other one normally sit here or no? No?
No. Not that you've disagreed, but...
Okay. Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Twing before we let Commissioner Douglas explain herself? Commissioner Cole?
Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Twing, I was taking note at the moment. Did you say that we would be able to, if passed as presented, existing lights would become not allowed and they would have to be removed?
Well, if there are existing ones, and there are, if that location came back for a new sign permit, under the current provisions in the sign ordinance, you can't have any non-conforming signs on site and get a new sign. So under that provision, you would have to seek either a variance or remove them. Those would be your two options as a property owner.
But there'd be no mechanism for the city, for any existing lights, they by right would be able to stay in their non-conforming status?
By understanding, there's no basis for us to just go out and tell those that are there to take them down.
Correct.
Very similar, we have signs all over town that exist, but they can continue to exist under the sign provisions until you do something new. That's as simple as refacing it. If you've got a pole sign that's too tall or too big and you get a new business and you want to reface it with a new name or a new thing, you either have to appeal or you have to make it comply. And that's how these would be treated as signs.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a follow-up question to that. So if I didn't like somebody who had these, somebody's sign, not somebody, if I didn't like the lights that somebody had up, and I went to the city and complained and said, hey, the sign ordinance says you can't have these, this guy has them, make him get rid of them, the city would do nothing?
It would do nothing until there's a request to change the sign on site.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, this is something I've been thinking about for quite a while, and it wasn't until our marijuana ordinance that I saw a path to accomplishing this. I don't think that's, those lights are a good look in our city, and I had support on the Planning Commission, and in fact, the Planning Commission recommended this to the City Commission unanimously. You might ask, are these signs? Because there are no words there. And just a quick background lesson, we are not allowed to regulate words on signs. Signs can say anything they want. The only thing we can regulate is their size, their shape, their location, physical conditions. And so one might say, well, you know, these tube lights aren't, don't have any words, so how can they be signs? But the fact is, we don't know if there's any words or not. And in fact, the purpose of these lights is to attract attention, is to accomplish what a sign with words would do. So we on the Planning Commission felt pretty comfortable with this solution.
Thank you. Anybody else on signs? Commissioner Douglas?
May I move approval on first reading?
Motion by Commissioner Douglas. Second by Commissioner Dubak. Anybody else? So I think we've had this discussion before, but less formally and randomly. I don't have a problem with the signs, and if there's no reason other than we just don't like the look of them, I'm not going to support the motion. But it seems like everybody else thinks it's a good idea, so we'll see. Any further discussion? All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. All right, motion passes.
The second half of this meeting is going much quicker than the first.
Yeah, we are. It's true. Okay. All right, we now, Ms. McClellan, sorry, it took me a minute, for the marijuana amendment.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. As a result of some recent developments, retiring or resigning City Attorney Aaron Leal asked for my assistance to draft some proposed amendments to the current recreational marijuana establishment ordinance. Predominantly, the issues were those that are described in the first paragraph of Mr. Leal's letter, which were the cannabis regulatory agency's denial of a special events permit for arts beats and needs because it was, the proposed location for that event was less than 1,000 feet from a K-12 school. And according to the CRA, the ordinance itself, the licensing ordinance itself, did not reduce the distance between a cannabis location and a K-12 school. The city zoning ordinance does have that power conferred to the City Commission to deviate from certain aspects of licensed locations, but that did not translate or carry over into the licensing ordinance itself. And the, under the Act, the ordinance itself must specify that the distance may be reduced. The next one was a, sorry, I lost my place here. The next one was a concern raised by staff related to the current licensees, all of whom have obtained a six-month extension essentially automatically after the expiration of their one year for the existing licenses. That is the two retailers that were awarded the licenses at the, after the competitive process and a microbusiness. I don't believe that there are any others that apply except for the Gatsby one, which also has a grower and a processor related to it and co-located at the same facility, proposed facility. Staff has, is fairly certain that none of these businesses will be able to be up and running by the end of their six-month extension. So they were concerned about what to do at the end of that six months. So at Mr. Leal's request, I drafted another amendment to allow another six-month extension, but requiring that the applicants or the licensees show that they are engaged in working on the facility with specific requirements and/or they are just waiting for the state to decide their state application for a marijuana license. Of course, it was not the intention of the commission that these licenses last indefinitely while there is not a facility up and operating, and the city has not been able to take any advantage of the excise taxes that would be available if there were going concerns in these locations. So we also included that the, for the second extension, they would have to pay the renewal fee, essentially the $5,000 renewal fee in order to obtain an extension as well. In the process of reviewing the ordinance, I noticed a couple of other minor, essentially minor clarifications and kind of cleanup that should be made, so those were also included in the proposed draft amendments.
I have a question. So the fee that's now going to be charged, is that already in there and now we're just referencing it, or do we need to change something to add?
So when you passed the marijuana ordinance itself, you passed a resolution establishing a fee schedule. One was for the application fee and then for, once the two, specifically for retailers, once those two were selected for a licensed slot, then they paid the additional $4,500 to finish the process and get the license. The renewal fee is $5,000. But there's not a specific place in the ordinance that says where, when and where and how you pay the fee. So I thought it was necessary to include that.
Gotcha, thank you. Commissioner Phillips?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. I just want to clarify too, this is not in response to existing licensees within the city, correct?
No, that's correct. These events came, they were totally unrelated.
Okay. And we have licensees within the city who've already been approved by the state or just in their construction phase right now?
I don't believe any of them have submitted state applications because in order to reply to the state, they have to be ready to go.
Correct. Gotcha, okay.
I would have said ready to roll, but that would have been an unintended one.
Oh, it's such a great narrative. That is a great name for marijuana.
And I just want to, what I did want to note about the distancing requirements, spacing requirements, is that this makes the licensing ordinance consistent with the commission's intent, when it passed this ordinance, to give itself the discretion to be able, on a case-by-case basis, to determine whether the distancing should be reduced from 1,000 feet to something less. This is not, as Commissioner Cole mentioned, this is not in response to anything related to the existing licensees. And the language, it mirrors the zoning ordinance language.
Any further discussion? Okay, so as you may recall, when this came up the first time, I was a bit of an outlier on it, and this is what I would have liked to see in there then, so I'm happy to see it now. I think, I probably would still differ from my colleagues in how I would apply this, but I think it's nice to have it in there explicit that now no one can question, with zoning plus this, to have that consistency in there is nice. Commissioner Cole?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. You know, we thought, when we first wrote this, it was written by our municipal attorney, and now this is kind of cleanup done by industry expert outside council. I think it's appropriate. And I think this, what we talked about, like you just mentioned, so with that, move approval of the resolutions, or ordinance as, amendment to the ordinance as presented.
Motion by Commissioner Cole? Second by Commissioner Dubak?
Good luck to whoever transcribes that.
She's already, she's had it pre-written anyway.
For clarification, this is for first reading.
That's what I said.
That's what he said.
Oh, you did? I missed that. Sorry.
Any further discussion on this? Commissioner Dubak?
Nothing. Conspiracy theories will subside, but the rationale is all right here. I appreciate the eloquent explanation of what we're doing and how it impacts our ability going forward. Thank you.
My pleasure. Okay, I'll call for the vote. Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes on first reading.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Taco Fest.
So, it is. So, good evening, Madam Mayor Protem and City Commission. The Police Chief and I are presenting a recommendation to establishing a parking rate for the upcoming Taco Fest. This is an expanded festival that will be happening June 30th through July 4th. We have received a cost estimate from ParkRight to man or to have individuals that would accept those folks who would use the 11-mile and the Center Street parking garage as well as certain surface parking spaces. It's at a $10 rate and like any type of fee for a parking area that is in close proximity to the festival itself is that we are charging a higher rate for the sake of having that ease and convenience. Already, we have $15 is the rate for arts beats and needs. The costs associated with this reimburse us for ParkRight, and I am recommending that the charges also include Sunday as well as on the holiday as well, that would reimburse us for the cost of $15,000 for ParkRight. In addition, that the footprint of the festival, that there is an amount that we are losing that otherwise would have been charged at the meters. Now, the event promoter is reimbursing MPS as this is not included in the agreement, but there is the portion of the city that we could have been charging over that period of, over those days that the meters would have, be in effect. There is the practical side of, for anyone entering into the parking garage, is that payment upon entering and that ease of exit, that simply the gates would be up or that there wouldn't be a long line to get outside of, upon leaving the parking garage. We were alerted, and I witnessed this during Winterfest, that it didn't work quite as smoothly as planned, and that was that the parking attendants were, did not show up early enough, so it kind of created this conflict of individuals that had to pull tickets and still had to pay at the parking station. But I've asked the chief not once but twice and been provided assurance that ParkRight will have adequate staffing, and we're talking a difference of, you know, favorable weather as opposed to, it was a little blustery cold that day as I was here during the Winterfest. So nevertheless, recommending that for your consideration in comparison to other parking venues, I mentioned that, you know, ordinarily, there's not many other activities going on. There is this golf tournament that's charging $20 to $25. There's other examples that the Ann Arbor Art Festival, they charge $18. And so just kind of bear that in mind, that this is market appropriate. The other thing that I would suggest to you is, I specifically asked the promoter, I said, based on pre-sales, who are our festival goers? And what he's indicated, only about 10% of Royal Oak residents attend the festival, based on this information. So, but charging a lower amount, I don't see the need that we should subsidize. If this was a heavily attended by Royal Oak residents, that would be a compelling reason to say that we would have a reduced parking rate. But this is the, what we calculate out is to cover our costs. Again, $15,000 plus there's loss of, I believe it's $70,000 that otherwise would have been charged in those parking meters during those prime days where we do charge for parking. So it's 87,750. So again, that's $102,000 of recouping our costs, direct costs, as well as lost revenues that we would have otherwise received had it been just a normal day where individuals would be parking in those locations. So that's a recommendation that we move forward. Happy to discuss and answer any questions and as it pertains to ParkRight and their involvement, the chief has had the direct conversations with our contact there and can address any questions or concerns that you have.
Thank you. Commissioner Douglas?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Braker. Yeah, anytime I, I was downtown Detroit during Pride Fest yesterday, and I mean, parking decks close to the festival grounds was $20. I mean, anytime I go into Detroit to a show or whatever, you know, parking is like 10 or 20 bucks. So I don't find this amount unreasonable at all. I do have a question about payment methods. How, is it cash? Is it credit cards? And if it is credit cards, how quickly does ParkRight process them?
I will defer to the chief on that. I think they can pay both, but...
Yeah, I spoke with ParkRight and there's the ability to pay cash or they have handheld point-of-sale devices, so as quick as they can process it. But the whole idea is to pay on the front end, and then all of our complaints come when people have pulled a ticket and then everybody is lined up and trying to pay at the kiosk, and that's where we got all the generated complaints from.
Yeah, I completely agree with the pay in advance. Do you know, is it tap to pay?
I believe it is, yes.
Okay. I hope so because that, I mean, that... I hope so, because that, I mean, that's just slide right through there. Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Cole?
I was hoping it'd be that old, you know, chink thing that they had department stores when we went back in the 90s to appear in the car. So one question, I also agree with Commissioner Douglas, I think that this is a fair fee. It will help things move along. Looking at something, you know, let's say someone's there on the 4th of July, and they have a lot of tacos, they need a lot of margaritas to wash down those tacos, and now they shouldn't drive their car home, and they make the very responsible decision not to. Will they have a ticket, a way to get their car the next day? Because I know that these in-and-out privileges are during festival hours, so is there a solution we can come up with, ParkRight, so that people on July 5th can retrieve their cars without paying the entire day rate? I think there's a lost ticket rate right now.
I would have to confirm, but I believe they have the ability to print a receipt. And again, that goes to slowing down the inbound traffic, but I believe they could have a receipt showing that they paid to come to the event, so if they push the help button, or if there isn't attendant, they should be able to get out without paying for that additional day.
Yeah, but if you're doing tap-to-pay, you're not going to stand around, wait for a receipt, expecting that you'll be drunk.
I would suggest this, this is a question that we can ask, and like the chief indicates, that for the folks that are on the other end, when you're pressing the help button, if we could alert them of that, that, hey, we may have a few stragglers that, you know, may need some assistance. And if they, I would say, no excuses of left my car from last night, just let them go. And it's just like, I would advocate that we shouldn't charge that lost ticket. You know, it's only the, I would say in that instance, that would encourage responsible sort of, you know, not drinking and driving, I guess is when I'm struggling with this, but we should encourage that. And it's probably the anomaly, but there could be a handful that could, you know, choose to do that, so.
Unless you can finish the bus pads earlier, Mr. Bray, and we can get good transit coming through here.
Commissioner Dubak?
I think it was, I think you misspoke. You said 10% of Royal Oakers are coming. You meant less than 10% of attendees are Royal Oakers.
Oh, yeah. That's a lot of Royal Oakers.
Thank you for clarifying that. Yes, not of our entire population, no.
It's one of the same, though. We have 60,000 people, 60,000 go to this. So 60,000, that is a lot.
I was intentional.
I don't think 10 is unreasonable. Couple of questions. One, I think it's really important that we emphasize, so this is only in effect during festival hours?
That is correct. And we will make other arrangements already for the library, for Henry Ford Health System, as well as, and there will be a couple of days that this building will be open. So my understanding, Taco Fest on Friday, we're already closed, but if you come on Monday, July 3, the Taco Fest starts at 11:00 a.m. But again, it'll be no excuses, if you're coming into the parking lot of saying, hey, I'm here to conduct city business, they'll just let them in.
What can we do in the weeks leading up to that, particularly at Farmers Market, to make sure people are aware that before 11:00, they will be able to park in the deck at the usual rates? I think that's important. We communicate that to Farmers Market owners this coming Saturday and Sunday, that that's going to be the case, but at 11 o'clock on that Saturday and Sunday.
Absolutely. So I think what, you know, what's, with now having our new communications consultant, this is something that'll rise to the level. You're bringing up a good point, so I'll make sure that they push out that communication and that we also do that through the communication that they work in coordination with the DDA. So if we really push out that messaging, but that's a very good point.
And then last year, I know we did, not last year, Winterblass, we did have the issue with the backups internally.
Right.
We were getting people out. I do believe that there's a value to visitors to get out of the deck and not be trapped in the deck.
I agree.
But, and maybe this is for the chief, did we see, is there a backup along 11-mile of people coming in as they're paying their 10 bucks?
You know, I asked ParkRight for kind of their feedback and how it went, because obviously they were there the entire time, and my staff was more so paying attention to the festival and what was going on, but they didn't see a lot of backups and everybody coming in all at once. It was busier towards the beginning of the festival, but it was spread out throughout the day, so there weren't long lines to get in the structures, is what was passed on to me from ParkRight.
All right, that's good to hear. And maybe, I mean, if this continues to grow, and this is a festival that comes back annually, probably too late this year, but if we have a pay-in-advance feature of some kind for people to run a credit card and come with a QR code or something, that gets them in real quick?
I asked about that. They don't have the technology, but I think if we continually ask, I couldn't agree with you more, that we should be, have that sort of feature where, you know, you could just, have some sort of seamless webpage that you can go to, because, you know, you can do that at an airport or anywhere else, and we should have that amenity as here. I wholeheartedly concur.
All right. Commissioner Cole?
I do have one more question. Mr. Bray, you alluded to this a little, but how about the other lots within the city? City Hall lot, the large lot up across on Main Street. How are we, because we need set rates for those also, correct?
Any of the lots that are not occupied by the festival, that would be the normal rates? So here, here's the thing. What I mentioned before, you're paying for convenience, and so you're in a closer location. If you wanted to just pay on the actual amount of time that you use, then you park further away at those surface lots and choose to walk here. So no, I am not suggesting in an adjustment, because that's where you differentiate, convenience, higher rate, and a lesser amount for people to park further away. Because here's the unintended effect, is that you could have, other businesses will be open, right, during that time? And if we had a higher parking rate, then you could have businesses saying, hey, we're adversely impacted, because, you know, you're jacking up the rates.
By bringing 70,000 people to downtown that are adversely, okay.
But, you know, we hear all sorts of arguments.
How about City Hall? City Hall, though, that's, will this lot still be open in front of the police and Farmers Market? Because that's not within the footprint, correct?
Correct. We were intending on including the City Hall lot that was not encompassed with the footprint, as well as the PD lot right outside the building here.
Within this $10?
Correct.
That is correct.
Because it doesn't say that in the resolution, so I guess, does the resolution need to be modified to include that?
If you want to verbally express that in the motion, then include that in there, so...
I want to legally express that in the motion, I guess.
Okay, all right.
I move that we approve the resolutions as presented with amendment of including the City Hall parking lots as required.
Very well stated. City Hall parking lots, you said, right?
Sure.
Okay. Yes, Commissioner Douglas? Second. Any further discussion on this? Commissioner Ha?
I mean, it's already been said, but I think a $10 fee is fair. I think it could possibly go up a little bit more. I've never been to a festival and paid, or some special event, and paid $10. It's always been 20. I think probably this weekend was between 20 and 40. So I think it's a fair fee. I'll support the motion.
Well, I mean, we're really trying to draw people here because it was so poorly attended last year, so...
I'm just saying.
That was a joke, people. It was very, very full last year. Okay. Any more? I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, it passes. Oh, look at that. The business of the good people of Royal Oak is concluded for the night.
It almost rolled into Taco Tuesday, too.
Do you have more?
And will we adjourn?
Motion by Commissioner Douglas. Second by Commissioner Dubak. Any discussion on our adjournment? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? We stand adjourned.
We did.
Can I?